Thank you, Brandon. So, everyone, we're running about forty-five minutes late, and we are going to be focusing this afternoon in open session on the Paraprofessional Working Group Report, which is a very substantial issue. And Justice Petru, who's the chair of that group, must leave us at four-thirty, so we're a little bit of a time crunch. So with that in mind, let's have a fifteen-minute break. And of course, feel free to bring food back with you to your video hideaway. But we'll start at two o'clock. And Luisa, if you do me a favor and post that on the PowerPoint so that people who want to join us will know that when they log in. And also send an email to board members in case there's someone not listening at this very moment so they know we're starting at two o'clock.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks so much. We'll see you in fifteen minutes. Let's go ahead and start recording. All right, before I ask Luisa to call the roll, I want to note that this is her first full meeting of the board as our new secretary. I want to welcome her and let her know that the board looks forward to working with her during the coming year. And I also want to acknowledge the work of our outgoing board secretary, Sarah Cohen, who was very devoted to her duties to the board. During her tenure as secretary, Sarah worked tirelessly to bring order to our work. She presided over the standardization of our agenda items, improved compliance with our duties under the Bagley-Keen Open Meetings Act, and seemingly effortlessly shifted our board meetings to a virtual Zoom format with which we have all become all too familiar. Though she doesn't seek the limelight, the board meetings always benefited from her hard work and good humor. So Sarah, thank you. With that, Luisa, please call the roll.
Thank you. Broughton?
Here.
Cisneros? Chen?
Here.
Dela Cruz? Dellen?
Here.
Duran?
Here.
Ganong?
Here.
Kertula?
Here.
Suleg? Shelby?
Hi.
So?
Thanks.
So?
He's in the, I'm sorry, he's in the attendees pool. I'm looking to pull him out.
Luisa, sorry, I'm here.
Thank you. Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Also possibly in the attendees pool. I'm pulling them out.
So all here.
Okay, and I have Mark Tony promoting him right now.
I believe Juan may also be in the attendee pool.
And I found him, thanks to the search feature within the panelist and attendees panel, that's very helpful. All right.
Yeah, I don't get these link things. I'm sorry. I don't quite understand them.
Okay, and trustees, Dela Cruz, Tony, and so we'll have all the product.
Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. And I was muted when I, that's why I didn't respond to your local. All right, so let's get the show on the road. Let me tell you the game plan for today, which is our open session will be limited to the outgoing chair's report plus item 701, which is the report from the Paraprofessional Working Group. Once we complete open session for today, the board will go into closed session with open session resuming tomorrow under Ruben's leadership as chair. I also want to inform you that item 5001 on our closed agenda, which pertains to a request for amica support in a case at the California Supreme Court, has been withdrawn. The matter, the underlying matter is moot because the court denied review in the case at issue. So that case is concluded. With that, let me move into my chair's report. As is the State Bar tradition, we end our board year in September in a two-day meeting with the outgoing board meeting on Thursday and the incoming board convening on Friday. This month, the board will be the same tomorrow as it is today, perhaps the first time that has occurred. Yes, that may be a surprise because it means I will continue to serve on the board as a member as I have two years left on my term. A break from tradition, to be sure, in which the chair, formerly called the president, departed upon completion of his or her term. Why am I staying? As you all know, the Ad hoc Commission on the Discipline System has been an important initiative I have nurtured and supported, and I'm committed to continuing to serve on both that commission and this board until the commission completes its work and brings its recommendations to this board for action, which is scheduled to happen by June of next year. However, while I am not the first chair to remain on the board, pardon me, while I am the first chair to remain on the board, I am not the first leader to remain on the board. We know of at least one case in which the president stayed on, and that was the late Jim Fox, who remained on the board after his presidency ended, and in doing so, set a good example of continuing his service to the organization while remaining humble and supporting the newly seated leadership of the bar. And one thing we have learned in recent years is that because the state bar is so complex, the board benefits from longevity of service. That is why the legislature at the bar's recommendation some years ago extended the terms of board members to four years with a possible second term instead of three years with no second terms, as had previously been the case. So here, Jim Fox's example of humility, comparable to George Washington's example centuries ago, will be an easy one to follow because I know Ruben and Brandon will be a superb team as chair and vice chair. And in any event, they will be the new bosses, so I'm compelled to obey them. So how do we take stock of this year at the State Bar? I would say we have continued marching forward on significant reform initiatives, of which we can rightly be proud. And we have also met some major challenges head-on. Let me start with the positive initiatives and accomplishments. Today, the Paraprofessional Working Group will be presenting a major innovative proposal to us that if adopted, would represent a major step toward closing the justice gap in this state, which is a pressing and urgent problem. Meanwhile, the closing the justice gap working group is continuing to study important changes to our regulatory system as another means of closing justice gap. And as I've mentioned, the Ad hoc Commission on the Discipline System is underway and now is deep into its work. That is a person, a point of personal pride for me and represents an effort to conduct the first probing systematic review of the attorney discipline system in California in about thirty years. Now, the commission's charge is a very sweeping one. And I really want to thank the staff working on that committee, Leah Wilson and Justin Ewer, because they have been very adept in channeling the discussions and deliberations into a systematic structure so that this rather sprawling effort can be made productive and not miss any important issues. They have just, they just have done a superb job, and I'm very, very grateful to them. We, as a board, must also pause to take some credit for having appointed during this bar year two of the three executives that report directly to the board, the executive director and the chief trial counsel. Of course, Leah Wilson is our new executive director, and I'm just delighted to have her back. We know the bar is in good hands under her leadership. And also, we just appointed George Cardona as chief trial counsel. And I am very, I have great confidence in George as our new chief trial counsel and look forward to innovation and improvement in that office to build on the leadership our interim chief trial counsel, Melanie Lawrence, has shown in that role. These appointments are among, I may have said that. Well, I think you all know that these appointments are among the most important responsibilities of the board and something that endures even after we leave the board as these people steward the bar into the future. I also want to express the board's gratitude to Donna Hershkreitz, who served with distinction as our interim executive director for eighteen months, and Melanie Lawrence, who did an admirable job as interim chief trial counsel for several years. And of course, we have been fortunate for the entire time I have served on this board since 2016 to have a fine general counsel, Vanessa Holton, who is always available and helps us mind our Ps and Qs. Especially as chair, I have valued her advice and guidance. Let me now acknowledge some of the challenges that we've had this year. And really, I think the biggest one is the Thomas Girardi matter, which the board has spent a good deal of time on. The board and all other bar officials like me are limited by law in what we can say about that subject. But as you know, and as is public, the board has established a committee on special disciplinary audit to take remedial action based on lessons learned from the special audit of Girardi cases. That effort is chaired by board member Jose Cisneros, treasurer of the city and county of San Francisco, and I'm very grateful to him for leading that effort. Some of the committee, the special committee's meetings to date have been in closed session because we were specifically discussing the special audit of Girardi files. But recently, the committee had a more extended public session to discuss changes going forward. And that is the overarching vision for this committee in the future, to meet in public, to discuss reforms and improvements of various kinds, to address that situation and other potential improvements in a timely and hopefully expeditious manner. Now, I must end on a personal note. I come from a very modest background. And every day this year, I've been honored and humbled to serve as chair of the State Bar of California. Holding this office is not something I would have ever imagined for myself. And I've tried every day to do my best to serve the people of the state of California, as has every member of this board. It has been really rewarding to serve the public in this role during this year and since 2016 as a board member during a time of major transformational change for this organization. Despite the challenges we, as a board and an organization, face this year, we can be proud of our ongoing affirmative process of reform and reinvention, as well as our appetite for facing difficult issues head-on. I hope we will continue to do our part to repair the world and improve this organization. Finally, I want to extend my thanks to my fellow board members and our devoted staff for your service to the public this last year. All right, with that, we will move next to item 701, final report and recommendations of the California Paraprofessional Working Group. And before we proceed to board discussion, I'm going to invite public comment. And I'd like the commenters, please, to limit their comments to this one item on today's agenda because we do have timing limits today. And if you have comments on other items on our open session agenda or the closed session for that matter, or actually, I should say, comments today should be limited to item 701 on the open agenda. And if you have comments on a closed session item, that's of course fair game. But please say to any other comments for tomorrow when the remainder of the open session agenda will be taken up by the Board of Trustees. So for attendees, if you would like to address the board, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. If you called into Zoom on a phone line, you can do that by pressing star nine. So please do that now if you are interested in addressing the board. Let's see. We do have hands. All right, we have quite a number of hands. So I'm going to limit comments to two minutes. And I haven't checked my emails, so I'm not sure who's managing this process today.
That's me.
That is the lucky winner. All right, so Dag, please take it away.
Terrific. With the support of our fine staff, we'll be opening microphones. And please be mindful of the two-minute observance. I will be calling the time sharply. We have forty-two people who are queued up for making public comment. We're going to start with Claudia Torres Ambres.
Thank you, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Claudia Torres Ambres, and I am an unaffiliated public member of the Paraprofessional Working Group, as well as having had the honor of serving on the licensing subcommittee. I'm just calling in to restate my support of the program and specifically the jobs that will be created and opportunities for the folks that will benefit from the program. As a member of the group, I have been very grateful to understand the intense training that these folks will have to go through, the eligibility that they will have to fulfill, all of the education parameters that they will have to complete, the practical training, the experiential, the moral character class, the testing that they will have to actually pass in order to become this new distinct, I'm sorry, class of paraprofessionals. I do feel that everything in the way that the program has been created is very structured, that the requirements are very clear, that there is a very clear distinction in between the class of licensees, including the prohibition of jury trials, but also the opportunities that these people will have to possibly become practicing attorneys in the future if they feel like going further. But I do feel that the public itself will benefit greatly from having a new class of licensees. I understand that there are other programs that already exist to help some of these people, that it can be free or low cost. However, because the justice gap is so great and people do have so many issues with accessing some of these resources, I do feel and strongly believe that this new group of paraprofessionals will fully serve the public in a greater way, just as yet another arm of the legal system so that folks can benefit, so that they have more people to reach out to. And the fact that everything will be approved and accredited through the state board.
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ms. Anne Hall. Ms. Hall, you have a microphone.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Anne Hall. I'm a member of the San Fernando Valley Bar Association, the San Bernardino Valley Bar Association, and also California employment lawyers. I've been in practice since 2007. About a third of the people that call my office unfortunately do so after having statutes blown. I represent employees mainly who are discriminated against and have claims that are brought under or that should be brought under Fair Employment and Housing Act. Just like we're all aware of mills that happen, you go down to Stanley Moss Courthouse and you see people still passing out flyers. It's a very big concern. People practicing law, maybe under the supervision of one attorney, when they've got fifty people that have no skill doing so. The practice of employment law is very complex. I'm still learning it. I continue to learn it every day. And I am extremely, extremely concerned that people that do not have actual knowledge in practicing the law, especially in the areas of Fair Employment and Housing Act, CIFRA, FMLA, leave things like this, will be harming their, their, those in need more than helping them. And that's, that's my area of concern is by opening up this very complex area of practice to people that are not experienced, will not serve the public interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Mr. Stephen Fleischman. Mr. Fleischman, once the microphone is available, it's available right now. You can unmute it, and you will have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Stephen Fleischman. I'm an attorney at Horvitz and Levy in Los Angeles. I too am a member of the working group. I submitted a written dissent, which appears on page eighty-four of the report. I believe it's page ninety of the PDF document. I would encourage all of you to read that dissent if you haven't already. My primary concern is that the Paraprofessional Working Group recommended in a divided vote to allow paraprofessionals to own up to forty-nine percent of a law firm and therefore share in attorney's fees in areas outside of their area of practice. Our working group met for dozens, if not hundreds, of hours to limit the scope of this program to a handful of areas, primarily family law and unlawful detainer law. However, by allowing paraprofessionals to own forty-nine percent of law firms, we are allowing those non-lawyers to share in forty-nine percent of the profits from all the groups of cases we held they're not qualified to practice in, including criminal, personal injury, employment, and immigration. Essentially, by someone becoming a licensed paraprofessional, we are giving them a license to become a runner and capper and get forty-nine percent of the profits for fees in areas which we've determined they should not be licensed to practice in. On the other side, the proponents of the rule offered no justification for allowing the sharing of fees in areas outside of the paraprofessional's license other than a general observation that we should encourage new business models.
You have fifteen seconds remaining. Thank you.
I don't think that's a good justification. In terms of timing, this is a fourteen-hundred-page report. When you put it out for public comment, I would urge you to do more than the standard sixty days. I'd also encourage you to give our working group, if we get thousands of letters, as we did with ATOL's additional time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Mr. Jason Solomon. Mr. Solomon, mic's available to you, and you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Jason Solomon. I'm the executive director of the Center on the Legal Profession at Stanford Law School. The relationship between legal services regulation and access to justice is our top priority, and we've followed it ever closely. I think this is an excellent, thoughtful, balanced proposal that will help close the justice gap in California, and I hope the State Bar begins implementing it as soon as possible. I sent a written comment in advance and will not repeat the points I made there. I wanted to speak here to a separate point, and that is the position of legal services. I expect that you may hear from some folks from legal services today. And if I were you, I might think, wait a second. If this is supposed to help with access to justice, why do I hear people from legal aid opposing it? And shouldn't that give me pause? I think you should not be concerned for a few reasons. First, as you know, the justice gap goes beyond the very poorest and extends far up the income spectrum, including small businesses. But legal aid primarily serves those that make less than one hundred twenty-five percent of poverty. That's thirty-three thousand dollars a year for a family of four in California. So when you hear concerns from legal aid, I believe they are understandably focusing on the population they serve. And for them, there may be some modest risk to a paraprofessional program, the possibility that low-income consumers will be confused and pay for services they could get for free. And there will be relatively little benefit to those consumers because they really can't afford to pay for any legal services at all. Indeed, this program will primarily benefit people who make more than one hundred twenty-five percent of poverty, people who can afford to pay something for legal problems that affect their lives, like child custody or housing. But they can't afford the two or three hundred dollars an hour charge by a lawyer. And there are millions of Californians like that today. These are the teachers, the nurses, the grocery store workers, the essential workers that we rightly have valorized during COVID. And yet, they can't afford to access their fundamental rights. That is an excess to justice problem. As to the risk of confusion, the recommendation specifically mandates informed consent that potential clients know about the availability of free legal services. So these concerns should not prevent us from moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Ms. Carolyn Shining. Ms. Shining, microphone has been made available for you. You have two minutes.
Okay, good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for taking time. And I am also a member of the working group. And I was on the Employment, Consumer Protection, Healthcare, and I believe a number of other subcommittees. And I would like to just recognize my co-members for, you know, that we put in a lot of time into this program. I too, like Mr. Fleischman, wrote a perspective from the consumer, consumer protection angle. And I joined in many of his points. This, my views were that this program is woefully inadequate and completely missed the mark with regard to closing the justice gap. It is merely going to bootstrap its way into a sandbox deregulatory system that unfortunately, the closing the justice gap, which is unfortunately named, in my view as well, is evaluating as we speak. This is not supportive of the kind of thing that we were supposed to really take on. As the comment was just made before, those essential workers are people who can least afford these kinds of projects as it is set forward in this program. The way in which this is structured, I urge you to read again. My dissent, my, it's right behind Mr. Fleischman's. I really hope you will take those points to heart. This is supposed to allow people almost up to the way of the jury system. This is supposed to be the, this proposes the default position for everything that's going to follow to be full in-court representation. That was something that I had approximately fifteen minutes to present on. And it really needs to be fully vetted and considered before you send this out for public.
You have ten seconds left. Thank you.
I would add, like Mr. Fleischman, please give the public more than sixty days to think this through. And if we get extensive comment, which expense we expect we will, allow us as a committee to have full amount of time.
Your time is up.
And respond to them.
The next speaker will be Ms.
Dag, let me interrupt for one moment. Just to our public speakers, we really welcome your input, but there's quite a number of people who have hands raised, and the board has limited time. So I apologize, we must strictly enforce the two-minute limit and treat everyone the same. So I apologize if we have to cut you off, but we must do it to keep the meeting on track.
The next speaker will be Mr. Michael Barth. Mr. Barth, once the microphone is available to you, you will have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Barth, staff attorney with the Consumer Rights and I can on Justice Project at Public Counsel. Public Counsel. Public counsel remains wholly opposed to the creation of a new for-profit industry of licensees. As the dissent makes clear, there are no statistics about how many Californians try to find an attorney but are unable to do so because they can't find one. The key problem, the justice gap, as you highlighted, and which these proposals do not address, is the knowledge gap affecting most litigants. Indeed, we are glad that the proposed no longer envisages paraprofessionals litigating debt collection cases in court. But these proposals will do nothing to educate consumers about what they can do about debt lawsuits and in the way that, for example, a system of legal navigators could. There is also nothing in these proposals that will stop paraprofessionals from setting up in the hearts of our low-income communities. Nothing to make sure low-income folks are directed to free legal services who may provide attorneys for them or private attorneys who can take a case on contingency. There's also nothing to regulate the fees that may be charged. What's more, these proposals, coupled with the regulatory sandbox, conjure up a worrying scenario where the provision of legal services is taken over by faceless corporations that use paraprofessionals to provide services in a cookie-cutter approach. That will not work to safeguard people's rights. Instead, it will extract money from consumers for the least amount of work possible. These proposals, if enacted, would institutionalize and legitimize the systemic inequalities embedded in our system of justice, ensuring the poorest in our communities will continue to go unrepresented. Most people are no more able to afford one hundred fifty per hour than they are standard attorney rates.
Mr. Barth, you have fifteen seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. The alternatives to bed your, educate the public about their legal problems, create nonprofit navigators, and help people get hooked up resources ready to help. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Olivier Talu. Your microphone has been made available. Once you unmute it, you have two minutes.
Honorable members of the Board of Trustees, by way of background, my name is Olivier Talu. I graduated from law school in nineteen ninety-nine. I clerked on the Central District of California for Judge Lourdes Baird and went on to clerk for Judge A. Wallace to Sheba on the Ninth Circuit. I started private practice at O'Melvyn and Myers, representing large corporate interests. I then went on to form a small firm, which later became a medium-sized firm, representing a variety of mid-market and Fortune one hundred companies in both a plaintiff and defendant capacity. Two thousand fourteen, I switched my practice to exclusively represent plaintiffs. I'm currently a partner at BDNJ where I focus on trying cases for injured clients. I'm a board member of CALA, COC, Los Angeles Trial Lawyers Charities, and a member of ABODA. I want to address the proposed changes to Rule five point four. And I believe that my experience gives me a particular depth of knowledge that is relevant. The recommendations from the Paraprofessional Committee has it a paradigm shift in California law that was never contemplated. In creating this paraprofessional framework, which has a substantial number of problematic aspects, the Paraprofessional Committee also takes it upon itself to open ownership of law firms to non-lawyers. It does so by allowing paraprofessionals to own up to forty-nine percent of a law firm by amending Rule five point four. This will allow paraprofessionals to profit from cases they are not allowed to work on, meaning cases outside of whatever licensure is allowed by the state bar. This means paraprofessionals who own up to forty-nine percent of the law firm will profit from PI cases, criminal cases, or from any type of case this committee has deemed inappropriate for paraprofessional handling. This would encourage paraprofessionals to actively seek referrals, either by way of their relationship in the community or by soft or actual capping, which is incredibly difficult to regulate in sharing the fees associated with the cases.
You have fifteen seconds remaining. Thank you.
If you would unleash hundreds of unscrupulous individuals to the underserved communities to get the highest value cases of all firms would have to engage in dubious practices to remain competitive. This alone merits voting against the expansion proposed by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Jackie Serena. Your microphone is available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, State Bar Board of Trustee members. My name is Jackie Serena and I'm speaking on behalf of the Consumer Attorneys of California. And I have also been authorized to speak on behalf of the California Defense Council as we are united in our views. First off, we support the written dissents by Ms. Shining and Mr. Fleischman. We have grave doubts of the final report of the California Paraprofessional Working Group as it is being presented today. We are greatly concerned that if implemented, it will cause irreparable harm to consumers and damage public trust in our legal system. We are also opposed to the radical idea that non-lawyer paraprofessionals, or whatever they end up being called as that is yet to be determined, should be allowed to own up to forty-nine percent of law firms. Further, we have substantive problems with the areas that have been identified for this initial experimentation, family law, consumer debt, and housing. For example, in consumer debt alone, we have argued that the lack of warning and fee agreements that a consumer may be waiving important legal rights under California's extensive consumer protection laws may have devastating and long-term impacts on consumers. It's simply reckless to sanction the creation of a profit-driven second class of legal services that may be incompetent or even fraudulent. Instead, we would support having better access to existing free and low-cost legal services, improving our court technologies and access to the civil gideon programs and online forums and assistance in our courts. It is naive to think that the grave problems we saw with the Notarios, immigration consultants who for a fee promised to help largely undocumented populations with their legal problems with disastrous results, won't happen again in the areas that paraprofessionals will be allowed to practice law in.
You have twenty seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. We urge you to vote no today and at the very least allow for a longer public comment, hopefully at least ninety days or whatever is most appropriate, to allow for meaningful exchange between the public and all of those who will be ultimately impacted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mr. Toby Rothschild. Mr. Rothschild, you have a microphone available to you and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Toby Rothschild. I've been involved in state bar activities on committees, commissions, or task forces and the like since the mid nineteen seventies, almost consistently. Most recently, I was on the Second Rules Revision Commission. I was on the Adels Commission, or Task Force, I guess, and I'm now on the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group. So I'm very familiar with the state bar's processes and its public comment processes. I have lots of comments about the substance of this that I'm not going to go into because of time limits. Other people can address those. I really want to address the sixty-day comment period. Sixty days is not enough to absorb and fully make meaningful comments on fourteen hundred pages of document. For those who are commenting on behalf of associations and particularly bar associations, there are often hoops to jump through so that I know, for example, with one association, if their ethics committee wants to submit comments on the ethics rules, the actual comment period will be about forty days before they would have to have their completed work done and submitted to their hierarchy to get approved before submission by a sixty-day deadline. I would like to suggest, I was planning to suggest a ninety-day deadline, but I realized that puts it right in the middle of the holiday season. Given the importance of this and the length of it, the amount of work that's going to have to be done to make meaningful comments, I would suggest actually a hundred and twenty days would probably be much more meaningful and get you better comments.
You have twenty seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. To get comments that will get you more than just, this is a terrible idea, but will get you really substantive comments that can tell you, here's how it could be better. Here's what needs to be changed here. Here's why specifically this doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Mr. Jeremy Evans. Mr. Evans, your microphone is available.
Thanks, Dag. This is Jeremy Evans. I'm the president-elect of the California Lawyers Association. Just wanted to reiterate the point that was just made. We just, I don't want to comment on the report directly and just, but just say thank you for everybody for doing the hard work on that. Just ask for a little bit more time. We would enjoy and sort of appreciate having a hundred and twenty days to review this, particularly because of the holidays. But that's all. Thank you, Dag. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. The next speaker will be Ms. Erin Joyce. Ms. Joyce, your microphone is available.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. I appreciate that, Mr. McLean. And I appreciate the opportunity to address this board. I'm speaking on behalf of the Los Angeles County Bar Association. And I can tell you, for those that don't know me, I have a deep understanding of the state bar, having been an employee for over eighteen years. So while I understand, having been a prosecutor, the most important thing that the state bar stands for is public protection. And these proposals directly undermine public protection in the guise of helping access to justice. No one denies there's a problem with access to justice. But these, so these ideas are not the solution. We already heard mentioned the navigator program that the Chief Justice identified in twenty eighteen, but the budget was cut for. That would directly impact the pro-pro litigants that are trying to make their way through the system on their own. We also should be looking into the right to counsel in civil matters such as unlawful detainer. And these proposals are going to derail those opportunities. If we're considering some kind of system like this, a lower-level licensee, we should start small. We should not be talking about a default position going to trials. How about something smaller like helping people prepare their documents in the self-help clinics? Because right now, it constitutes practice of law to identify which forms the person needs. That seems like a no-nonsense, limited solution. We also need to really look at the education environment. The most problematic part of this are the rules. This was nothing more than a search and replace, and that was not sufficient. By taking out the citations to the State Bar Act, you make these rules incomprehensible and they cover a lot more solutions than the three different areas that are limited here. So we need a lot more than a hundred and twenty days probably to identify proper rules for this limited licensure.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Ms. Angela Grealva. Ms. Grealva, your mic is available.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the committee for all your hard work. So I'm presently a legal document assistant. Surprise, surprise, we're already here providing document, well, legal services document preparation to the public and we're non-attorneys. That might be a shock to a lot of you all. So this pilot program is really not anything over too revolutionary or too dangerous, right, unprecedented. We've already been here and doing so successfully for twenty-plus years. So my concern, oh, and to the comment about selecting documents, a lot of the documents are mandatory and selected by the judicial council and the court, so that's a no-brainer. So the conflicts that exist about this paraprofessional program under the auspice of the state bar is my main concern. I'm concerned about the viability of this program because I am looking to become a paraprofessional and I'm looking to complete all the educational and experiential requirements. And I'm worried that the program won't be here in a few years. And we saw that in the Washington model, which the Paraprofessional Working Group did a lot to address, you know, to try to circumvent that. What we've seen through the prior proposed proposals that were rejected time and time again, right? This is not the first time we're here. That's where my concern is. And you can see, as the other public comment of the self-interested attorney associations, you know, there's a lot of conflict within the state bar. And again, further evidenced by the Tom Girardi case, right? There was blind eyes. And I'm so glad and excited to hear about the revolutionary changes that, you know, the state bar is committed to making. But one of them I would ask if you take into consideration is how do you protect these non-attorney professionals and LDAs like myself from attorneys
You have ten seconds remaining.
who are looking to, who see us as competition and coming up with straw man arguments to eliminate us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Danny Abier. Mr. Beer, your mic is available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, members of the board. My name is Danny Abier. I've been an attorney since nineteen ninety-five, a board in nineteen ninety-four. I have two master's degrees from Georgetown and NYU. I'm only bringing this out so that masters in law, international law and taxation. I started my career with Deloitte and Touche, which is now a Big Four firm, a fifty-billion-dollar company that is the largest provider of legal services outside the United States. The Big Four combined have billions and billions of income outside the United States providing legal services. This kind of a change in the legal world is going to create a world for them where they're going to be able to provide legal services in the United States. That's definitely not going to close the justice gap. But having, saying something about the justice gap, we need to take a look and see what it is that the justice of doing this is going to do. The model of the ABS or Alternative Business Structures has been in place in the UK for years. If you look at the United Kingdom, as far as people's access to and affordability of civil justice in the UK, the UK is seventy-ninth out of a hundred twenty-eight countries in terms of that. This is based on the Rules of Law Index. So what is it that we're going to achieve by doing this? This is not going to create access to justice. This is going to create a second class of legal services, meaning those who can't afford it are going to go to paraprofessionals. And the state bar has a hard enough time policing lawyers. How are you going to police the lawyers and the paraprofessionals?
You have ten seconds remaining. Thank you.
I would highly, highly, highly appreciate it if you guys reconsider this. And this is going to destroy the practice of law in the United States because it's going to start with California. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Jeannie Harrison. Ms. Harrison, your mic is available. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm Jeannie Harrison and I'm an employment and sexual abuse victims' rights lawyer in Los Angeles. I represent victims in high-profile and no-profile cases, including women against Harvey Weinstein and the women of Riot Games and their equal-pay class action. I'm also president of CALA and have attended and given comment at dozens of the PPWG meetings and lectured and written articles about these state bar initiatives. In January twenty twenty, the board directed the PPWG to establish specific recommendations about how a paraprofessional program should be established, not whether such a program should be established. You, the members of the board, are the ones who decide whether, in light of the paraprofessional report, the program should or should not proceed from here. Your fiduciary duty to protect the public means that, like doctors, you must first do no harm. The expert testimony given in dozens of working group meetings and the report itself show that advancing this paraprofessional program is premature because of the known harm to the public that will occur if you put the cart of the paraprofessional program before the horse of public protection infrastructure. In the PPWG hearings, numerous DAs, prosecutors, investigators, and community experts testified that they don't have the resources to effectively protect the public now from the current state bar licensees and non-licency unauthorized practice of law offenders. They said, don't set up a program like this until the state has already provided adequate resources to protect the public against the harm that will happen from a whole new class of state bar licensees. Based on the expert testimony already received and the report at page seventy-three, the board should not advance this program unless and until the legislature has first allocated sufficient law enforcement funding and recent.
The next speaker will be Ms. Andy Fields. Ms. Fields, you have a microphone and two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andy Fields. I'm a plaintiff's employment lawyer and I've been practicing law for five years. I'd like to reiterate what some of my colleagues have previously stated today about non-lawyer ownership in law firms. There's simply no reason why a paraprofessional should be allowed to own up to forty-nine percent of a law firm. The reasons to reject this change are numerous and compelling. There's a simple illustration of the practical problems that this would cause. Anyone familiar with corporate law knows that forty-nine percent ownership, or even a substantially smaller percentage than that, can amount to de facto control of an entity. The reason is that it is very unlikely that the other fifty-one percent will be controlled by a single person or interest group or otherwise vote so uniformly as to defeat a forty-nine percent owner. Instead, the vastly more common scenario will be that the fifty-one percent will be split among the number of people. The clever non-lawyer person or entity seeking to control a law firm will make certain that the fifty-one percent is split among the substantial number of attorneys. It will be easy enough for the non-lawyer to seek out only those situations in which it could control the acquired entity. What is the consequence here? A simple probability analysis provides the answer. If, for example, the non-entity, the non-lawyer entity owns forty-nine percent of the law firm and seventeen attorneys owe three percent each for a total of fifty-one percent, the non-lawyer entity will have an overwhelming probability of winning a contested vote on any issue and therefore will have a de facto total control. After all, the non-lawyer shareholder will need to persuade only one of the seventeen to vote its way.
You have fifteen minutes, fifteen seconds remaining. Thank you.
Nearly unsolvable conflicts created by this scenario. The revision to Rule five point four was excluded from our charter. I encourage you to vote no on this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Mr. James Gordon. Mr. Gordon, you have a microphone available to you and two minutes. You need to unmute your microphone, Mr. Gordon. Your microphone is showing on.
Yes, there we go. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Gordon. I'm a certified specialist in estate planning, trust, and probate law and have been practicing since nineteen eighty-two. You know, despite the frequent invi- You know, despite the frequent invocation of the justice gap by those who favor paraprofessional licensing, I think if you go back to the state bar reports, the California Justice Gap, the 2019 California Justice Gap Study, and the 2019 California Justice Gap Study Executive Report, you'll find nothing in there that makes any recommendation for the use of licensing paraprofessionals to bridge the justice gap. Uh, proponents of paraprofessional licensing seem to have appropriated the language of the state bar reports for their project, perhaps hoping that no one will notice that none of the state bar reports gives any mention to the use of paraprofessionals in closing the gap. What evidence is there that paraprofessional licensing will even aid in closing the justice gap? Well, there appears to be none at all. There are no studies of any kind to show that licensing paraprofessionals to practice law will in any way close the gap or indeed be affordable for a majority of Californians. This proposal needs to be returned to committee for a rigorous examination of all the possible methods of closing the gap, such as an expansion of legal aid and greater funding for courthouse initiatives aiding the self-represented. The presumption that paraprofessional licensing will close the gap is wholly unjustified.
You have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Closing the gap, we need a serious study as to how that will be accomplished. Thank you for giving me this time today.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Balam Latona. Balam Latona, you have a microphone available and two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Balam Latona, and I am an attorney in the San Francisco Bay Area. I am also a first-generation immigrant. My parents are from Guatemala. I'm a member of the National Association of Consumer Advocates. I spent about two years in legal aid before I went out on my own, and for the last 16 years, I've been practicing consumer laws. I, um, consumer law. I help consumers who have been victimized by harassing debt collectors, financial institutions, shady car dealers. And the current proposal, uh, will not protect consumers that I am sworn to protect and that also the state bar is sworn to protect. In my Spanish-speaking Latino community, if you say you're an abogado, a licenciado, or notario, that's instant respect, or at least you listen. And I've seen countless notarios commit fraud, and it's often too late when they eventually come to my office seeking legal protection. This proposal is to incentivize profit over people. Corporate business values, they measure people by profit and not human values, and humans can't be measured in economic terms. Um, that system may be effective for some corporate law firms, but it's not effective for the poor or least sophisticated people. I ask that this proposal be rejected and also maybe further studied. I do agree with some of the commentators that are family law and unlawful detainer, uh, folks, they need help. I would suggest an investment in the self-help group. There was an earlier commentator that talked about, um, how legal aid doesn't have an idea of really what the impact is going to be because they only serve a certain income threshold.
You have 15 seconds remaining.
I've been out, um, 16 years, and I can say that that is not true. That legal aid doesn't see half of the people that they are sworn to see, and oftentimes those people go elsewhere. And so you're just going to open up the floodgates to allow those that group of people to be not served. Thank you very much.
The next speaker will be Allison, Ms. Allison Snow. Ms. Snow, your microphone is available. You will need to unmute it. I'm showing you. There you go.
My name is Allison Snow, and I run the Consumer Protection Division at the Legal Aid Society of San Diego. Part of my job is to address the negative consequences of people getting into loans and credits that they cannot afford. Quite simply, this is a program that the state bar cannot afford. The working group's recommendation has less than 10 sentences dedicated to how this program will be funded. First, the funding of this program is entrenched in the myth that the program will be self-sustaining. The recommendation is wholly bereft of any facts, evidence, data, or information to support its argument that this program will eventually be able to pay for itself. And none of the other paraprofessional programs in other states has the program proven self-sustaining, quite to the contrary. The Washington State program was terminated after it was unable to sustain itself, saddling the bar with a $1.4 million balance. It is not a self-sustaining program. The working group has slapped an annual $1.65 million price tag on this program, which does not include the cost for curriculum development, program evaluation, and exam development and testing. These costs will only drive up the initial estimated $1.65 million price tag. The only source of funding not stemming from the loan from the state bar's general fund is theoretical philanthropic grants. The working group failed to identify any particular grant that would offer sufficient financial support to cover this amount. The failed to, the failure to explore and identify any grant hints at the fact that the working group is largely expecting the state bar's general fund to provide the loan. A loan that-
You have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
The chances of pre repayment are whisper at best. Finally, the paraprofessional program does not help low-income families for those of whom the justice gap is widest. Why is the bar ignoring our most vulnerable, most marginalized communities in favor of pouring millions of dollars?
Thank you, Ms. Snow. The next speaker will be Mr. Mike Baloat. Mr. Baloat, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod and, uh, members. Mike Baloat, representing the California Defense Council. We applaud Justice Petru and the hard work of the working group. Uh, but unfortunately, we think, very, very worthy mission, wrong conclusion. Uh, we would align our comments with that of Mr. Fleischman and Ms. Serna. There are far more narrowly tailored answers to the justice gap, which has subtleties and nuances. It is a knowledge gap. It's a, it's, people have to know they have a legal problem and what their avenues of redress are. Uh, the one close analogy in the state of Washington, a state of 7.7 million people, was 30 paraprofessionals. That was an abject failure. Instead, we suggest that the chronically underfunded programs of legal aid, self-help, civil gideon, navigators be explored to their capacity because we think that's a far more fruitful way to, uh, to get people the representation they need without the unintended consequences that can flow from, uh, allowing paraprofessionals to represent people in court and allow them to own 49% of law firms. We think, again, worthy objective, wrong conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Ms. Jennifer Ostertag. Ms. Ostertag, your microphone is available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Ostertag. And I'm a plaintiff attorney, and I've been practicing for over 20 years. I have serious concerns about the proposed paraprofessional program. No matter how well-intended the program is, there are serious flaws with it. There are no statistical data on how many Californians have tried to find an attorney and could not or were unable to afford one. To the contrary, data shows that two-thirds of Californians with perceived legal needs took no step to try to find legal help, whether from a lawyer, legal aid group, the internet, or otherwise. The state bar justice gap report correctly refers to this as a knowledge gap, not a justice gap. Another issue is the large number of self-represented or pro se parties in California courts. These individuals tend to be clustered in certain areas, including family law, unlawful detainer cases, and consumer debt. These are areas where representation on a contingency basis is generally not available, where no statutory awards of attorney's fees are available to motivate attorneys to handle these cases on a contingency basis. And often individuals have limited means and may be unable to afford to hire an attorney at any rate. A better approach from the onset was to address the self-represented litigation problem on a holistic basis, including evaluation of an expansion of the incredibly helpful self-help centers and increased funding for legal aid associations.
You have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
The working group has heard from those legal aids. We know that the state bar, the state of Washington shut down its paraprofessional program after five years. Thirty individuals signed up, spent $104 million, and failed to address the justice gap. Is the state bar of California is truly willing to spend that money and wants to address the justice gap? Then I'd hope it considers increasing its legal funding.
Thank you, Ms. Ostertag. The next speaker will be, uh, it's identified only on my screen as call-in user three. Your microphone is available. You need to unmute it. Your mic, there you go. I've just lost call-in user number three. We're going to go next to Mr. Robert Fine. Mr. Fine, your microphone has been made available. Once you unmute it, you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Fine. I've been a lawyer eight years, practice in general litigation. And for many of the cases in my practice, I believe what this, uh, program is going to do is unleash an army of pro-pro litigants with frivolous lawsuits, and many of them, it'd be has to, there's about every vexations litigant on the judicial council's vexations litigant list, or many who belong there. And the justice gap is going to flip on its head because innocent defendants will have to spend thousands of dollars, many of them small businesses, many of them innocent neighbors, to defend against these frivolous lawsuits. And they're going to likely have to seek out the same people that you're proposing work with the pro-pro litigants. And you're going to have a nightmare of this, uh, the, of the clogging of the courts. I've experienced this myself over, over several years. I've appeared in four, uh, court of appeal cases, appeared in the Supreme Court, and these were all in the course of dealing against vexations litigant, who eventually get declared a vexations litigant, but it cost fortunes of money. And the people who were, um, victimized with this were just not wealthy people. So it's every small business, every, uh, next-door neighbor of, uh, of somebody that's got a grievance with them is very dangerous, I think. And I, I heartily, uh, would vote against it if I could. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Kip Muller. Mr. Kip Muller, microphone will be, is it now available? You have two minutes.
Thank you, and good afternoon, members of the board. Uh, I'm Kip Muller. I'm a relatively recently licensed attorney. I do plaintiff employment. And I'm worried about the future of the legal profession in California. And I'm on the Los Angeles County Bar Association's Access to Justice Committee, and I'm not speaking on their behalf, but I just want to start by saying access to justice is an incredibly important topic for me, and this is the, uh, complete wrong way to go about it. Um, almost all of my clients are from underserved communities. I represent workers, most of whom are low-wage earners, and I'm dedicating my career to that work. And there's an obvious way to expand access to justice, and it was provided in the state bar's most recent closing the gap, uh, justice gap report. We need more funding to attract more quality attorneys towards legal aid organizations. We already have this infrastructure. We just need to expand access to justice by funding it. And I'm also involved in Sacramento politics, and I fought for more funding for pro bono legal services from the California State Equal Access Fund and the California Department of Social Services. I fought for that money, more money to go towards access to justice. And I can tell you that the interests who support this paraprofessional program were not there. And now that there's money to be made, a lot of corporations are suddenly very concerned about access to justice. And to me, that's crocodile tears. Um, I think that subpar representation will cause serious harm to underserved communities and not help them. This is a profession that requires immense skill. I'm seven years into being an attorney after three years at Columbia Law, and I'm still making mistakes. I'm still lost at times, especially when confronted by things that are obscure to me, like the probate code. But I'm guided by my 10 years, three in law school and seven practicing, and I can get my bearings because I had a quality legal education and have years of legal practice.
You have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
So that if I'm facing the best defense attorneys in California, I can hold my own for my client. The solution isn't to allow underqualified people to attempt to practice law and underrepresent clients. It's to adequately fund programs that are already here. We have the infrastructure already. So I ask that you reject the paraprofessional program. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Helen Bellamy. Ms. Bellamy, you have the microphone, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Helen Bellamy, and I've got a background, but I think I want to speak on behalf of the legal consumer. I am a legal consumer. And the money that I choose to pay to solve my legal problem has nothing to do, it has a lot to do with the cost. As an educated California consumer, I have a right to represent myself. I have a right to pay someone qualified. And not only, attorneys are not the only people who are qualified to assist me. So I think that the, the, the dog whistles, and that's just a term that I'm using, is being used. Stop making this, the issue about low income and deprived and marginalized people. That's a, a way of having lawyers say, "We're the only ones that can help." Big Brother is not a solution to one of my problems. Education is. So if we make the law readable to where people can actually understand their problem, who's a better person to take care and be an advocate for themselves? I think it is very much a problem when we say that, quote, "Big Brother is the only one that can take." You're making victims out of people. And I have worked all my life, or the majority of my adult life, to say no. You can do this if you make the law readable, accessible, the process.
You have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
I can, I can be finished, but I really just want you to understand that there, there's, there's something that's not being said. There is an elephant in the room. And it's all about who's going to protect. Sometimes we don't need protection. We just need access. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Lee Ferrin. Ms. Ferrin, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much for, for offering this time for public comment. I know there's, there's a lot of us. Uh, my name is Lee Ferrin. I'm an attorney with the Public Law Center, which is a nonprofit civil legal services organization that provides free civil legal assistance to low-income residents of Orange County. PLC has been following the work of Adels and the paraprofessional group for the last few years. We have concerns that we feel were not addressed, um, which include, but aren't limited to, um, first, as others have said, the premise on which it was based, that to quote-unquote "solve the justice gap," more types of assistance are needed. We believe that's flawed. The justice gap study taught us a lot. Um, but as others have said, more than anything, it taught us that folks need help identifying when they have a legal problem first. Um, we believe there's definitely room to, to, uh, expand upon the, the study of the justice gap to identify what the actual solution could be that will, will, will resolve some of those issues. Um, second, the proposal currently creates a for-profit industry. There could be a real benefit to training folks to work at busy family law firms, at low-bono organizations, and at legal services organizations. The proposal could encourage or incentivize the new licensees to work collaboratively with existing resources that are already serving low and moderate income folks, but it doesn't. The last item for today, um, is that the working group has said both that this new licensee is targeting or is not targeting low-income folks. It's been unclear. The issue is not that our clients cannot afford a lawyer, but that they cannot afford to pay for legal services, period. We're extremely concerned that clients who cannot afford to pay will turn towards predatory loans or enter into contracts that they cannot afford.
You have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. There are other issues, um, as others have mentioned. And I, I, at this point, we just, we urge you to reconsider the proposal as it stands and take a close look at how any proposal can work hand-in-hand with existing resources rather than spending substantial sums of money on an entirely new program. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Gregory Knoll. Mr. Knoll, your microphone's available. You have two minutes. Thank you. I'm showing your microphone. There you go. Unmuted now.
Thank you very much. My name is Gregory Knoll. I'm CEO and chief counsel of the Legal Aid Society of San Diego. Been in that position since June of 1974. I want to express our grave concern with the proposed paraprofessional program and to urge the board to reject the proposal. The Legal Aid Society of San Diego is the largest nonprofit provider in San Diego County and has been doing so for over 100 years. We've been monitoring this proposal closely, serving on working groups, and conducting extensive research. We have raised concerns with general aspects of the proposal, as well as within specific practice areas. Unfortunately, we feel that these concerns have been routinely ignored. The single greatest impediment to obtaining legal assistance is the cost. Closing the justice gap requires free or low-cost legal services that focus on serving our historically marginalized communities. Working group recommends that fee caps not be put in place for paraprofessionals, stating that because of the steep licensing requirements, they would likely need to charge rates, quote, "similar to private attorneys," end quote. This negates the very point of the program. It does not increase access to justice. It simply creates a tiered for-profit legal system that continues to price out socially- that continues to price out socially disadvantaged communities.
20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Race and equity divisions. Studies of the longest running paraprofessional programs do not provide empirical evidence of a contribution towards narrowing the access gap. The program itself is not even economically feasible.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. The next speaker will be Renee Yvonne Gardner. Ms. Gardner, your mic's available. It's still muted. Ms. Gardner, you need to unmute your mic.
Good afternoon. I'm Renee Yvonne Gardner, a Spanish speaking solo consumer attorney for 15 years, based in Santa Clara County, California. I represent personal injury plaintiffs, mostly monolingual Spanish speaking immigrants. In Mexico, a notary is an, is an experienced attorney appointed by the governor of a state, a notario. The term notario in California misleads Hispanics to believe a notary is a licensed attorney. This already harms a community. I've heard many accounts from immigrants over the years. Let's not add to it. I support the dissents of PPWG committee members Steve Fleishman, except on fee caps, and Carolyn Shining in full. See pages 84 and 98 of the report. I fully oppose this radical program as a real threat to the public and a fresh opportunity to defraud many of the most vulnerable among us. See page 73 of the report. This program creates a two tiered system. Paraprofessionals for lower income people and real lawyers for the middle income or wealthy. Those who can't afford lawyers will be represented by unskilled paraprofessionals and non lawyer owned and controlled entities severely disadvantaged when going up against real attorneys. How does this close the justice gap? Over the past one and a half years, legal aid groups across our state have appeared at the 120 plus PPWG committee, subcommittee hearings vehemently opposing this program. No legal aid group has voiced its support during these meetings, not one. The PPWG heard from many prosecutors during its hearings. All say they already can't adequately police the paralegals, notarios and lawyers, nor the unlicensed.
15 seconds remaining.
Who prey upon the vulnerable prosecuting only the worst of the worst. This leaves lower income and immigrants to suffer the aftermath of what they thought were good legal services, which were actually exploitation by non lawyers. Approving this program is highly irresponsible. The board's fiduciary duty to the public.
The next speaker will be.
Doug, let me interrupt. So we still have about 20 people on the list. And that would take more than 40 minutes. So we've been going for about an hour now. And so I think we're going to have to terminate public comment shortly. We'll take five more speakers and then we'll go to the board for, then we'll have the presentation and the board discussion. So five more, Doug.
I'm sorry. I think, I think we've got to hear public comment. I think it's important. And if, I mean, people have taken the time. I think it's our obligation. We'll, we'll have to figure it out. I feel strongly about that.
I'm in agreement as well. I feel people have taken the time for public comment and it's our duty to listen to their remarks.
And I will concur on that, both by Ms. Shelby and Mr. Tony.
All right. So Doug, give me, go ahead and proceed. Can someone please? Yes, go ahead. Please, please proceed, Doug.
All right. We're going to go next with Ms. Margaret Stevenson. Ms. Margaret Stevenson, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Great. Thank you very much. I support the proposal to license paraprofessionals. My background is 10 years as a legal services lawyer. I worked then for 12 years at community based clinical legal programs at Stanford and Santa Clara Law Schools. And then since 2008, I've been working here at San Jose State at an undergraduate clinical legal services program, providing free expungement, record clearance work for our community here in San Jose. I also was a consultant at a self help center. So I have some background that I bring in, in really endorsing this proposal. Definitely over the years, I've seen the problems with the unauthorized practice of law and exploitation of vulnerable communities. I've also seen the practice of malpractice attorneys and the problem with malpractice attorneys. And I think we all know that, you know, licensing attorneys is no guarantee that you're going to get the kind of assistance that the public is entitled to. What I've seen in working with our about two thirds first generation collegegoers and the students in the courses that they take is a, an enormous determination to work hard to serve the communities that many of them come from. They are very often from backgrounds that don't allow them to, don't have the financial means to enable them to go to law school. So having the opportunity to dedicate themselves to providing for their communities and, and using their hard work in, without incurring the costs and, and debt obligations of law school, it really seems quite workable to me.
15 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add that the undergraduates are fantastic interviewers and deeply dedicated to the work that they do. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mr. Michael Holberg. Mr. Holberg, your mic is available. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Holberg. I'm a manager at ILS, the Institute for the Advancement of the American Legal System. ILS is a national research institute that works on these very access to justice issues. I would like to voice my support for the California paraprofessional program. Study after study, data shows that there's a clear unmet need for legal services. And one of the underlying causes is the cost of those services. There's an overwhelming number of people who don't qualify for legal aid and who also cannot afford an attorney. And unfortunately, pro bono work has not and cannot solve this issue. So something has got to give. And this paraprofessional program is a solution with promise and it deserves a chance to be developed and tested. Opponents have pointed to the Washington triple LT program as evidence of these paraprofessional programs don't work. But one state's experience with a very different program is not guaranteed to be California's experience with the proposal at hand. Two big differences from Washington program, Washington's program that will bring more people to join this program are the expanded practice, practice areas that include high volume cases and the reasonable education requirements. The main goal here is to better serve the public and that includes making sure they're served by someone who's competent. The paraprofessional program working group has laid out robust education requirements, 1,000 hours of practical training and a discipline system structure that includes key components of the attorney discipline system. And so for each of these reasons, I ask the Board of Trustees to accept these recommendations and to move forward with the paraprofessional program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holberg. The next speaker will be Mr. Tom Gordon. Mr. Gordon, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tom Gordon. I'm the executive director of Responsive Law, which is a national nonprofit organization advocating on behalf of consumers of legal services. I'd like to urge the board to be aware of its duty to represent and protect the public and to be wary of lawyers and bar groups that find, happen to find policy problems with, with regulatory changes that just might create competition for that. That's an important subtext that I think we need to be aware of throughout this debate. There have been several good points made that this would not close the justice gap entirely. That's true. We should certainly focus on closing the knowledge gap. It's a very important problem. There should be better funding for self help centers and for legal aid. But that shouldn't prevent us from finding a way to help alongside those other ways. Let's have this program go forward so that we can help people in one way and not prevent us from helping them in other ways. There's also been a lot of talk about notarios. There is no reason for notarios to be mentioned in this context. This is a program that would regulate and license paraprofessionals. This is not going to legalize scam artists. And to say that it would do so is the equivalent of being in 1930 in the U.S. and saying we should continue prohibition because some people have been severely ill as a result of drinking bathtub gin. We also have heard that paraprofessionals will ignore or even worse exploit the neediest among us. And I've heard two directions on this. People have said that paraprofessionals won't help the needy. And then they've said that they will go in and exploit the needy by gasp, by setting up shop in underserved neighborhoods. Well, when Safeway goes into an underserved neighborhood, we're thrilled. We don't say, you're not a Whole Foods. You must be there to exploit people.
15 seconds remaining. Thank you.
So again, I urge the board to look at its duty to the public, to the consumer, and not give great weight to the voices of those who would suffer from competition if this program were to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Malasak Burges. Or Burges, apologies for the pronunciation there. Your mic is available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
No problem. Good afternoon. My name is Malasak Burgess, and I have been a licensed attorney in California for nine years. Prior to being admitted to the California bar, I had the privilege of working as a student law clerk at the Stanley Moss courthouse in Los Angeles for more than eight years. I fully support the dissent of paraprofessional working group member Shining, which is found at page 98 of the report. I urge you to read this dissent in full so that you can see why you need to vote no on authorizing the program to go forward to public comment. It is my understanding that California state bar was created some 94 years ago to protect the public. However, sadly, that is not always what actually happens. It was only a few months ago that the state bar acknowledged its mishandling of many years of complaints filed by members of the public against a prominent Los Angeles attorney. Mishandling is a nice way of saying that the bar failed to protect and acts in the interest of the individuals who had filed those complaints. The state bar did an injustice to those people and will be doing the public an injustice by allowing paraprofessionals to represent individuals. Individuals who in all reality are going to be coming from poor or low income communities. Furthermore, the state bar expects us attorneys to act responsibly when it comes to our clients' funds. Shouldn't this state bar be held to the same standard? Well, it doesn't seem like that's the case, given what an irresponsible use of public funds this whole paraprofessional program has been. The wasting of state bar funds must stop here and now please vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Mr. Craig Peters. Mr. Peters, your microphone is available.
Thank you. My name is Craig Peters. I'm the incoming president of the Consumer Attorneys of California. I've spent my entire legal career fighting on behalf of those who've historically been marginalized, disenfranchised and lack power against the more connected and more powerful adversaries. The first half of my career was as a public defender. And the second half has been helping those who are fighting against large corporations and insurance companies. So it's, that, that's the background from which my perspective is shaped on this particular issue. The bottom line is that this proposal creates a whole new business model for taking advantage of the poor and underserved. That business model has as its premise that the free market will somehow solve the justice gap problem. That's as preposterous as thinking that the free market will solve our access to healthcare problem. California prides itself on being a leader in consumer protection, but this proposal lowers the bar on that protection. The additional responsibilities that this will impose on the state bar is not something that the state bar should sanction. The consequences of this proposal is that consumers and the state bar will ultimately suffer. I ask you to reject this proposal and seek practical solutions that don't depend on a fanciful free market solution, but instead bolster and expand existing programs. I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Pamela Royce. Ms. Royce, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Pamela Royce. I'm a solo practitioner in San Gabriel Valley, a member of the San Gabriel Valley Bar Association, although I'm not speaking on their behalf. I support very nearly every single thing that was said by the people preceding me who are against this entire proposal whole cloth. I think we're running to about 25 or 30 comments against versus about four comments in favor. They've said it more eloquently than I can say it. But I think that there are some very definite concerns that this is the, the nose of the camel in the tent. Okay. And when the nose comes in, then the rest of the camel follows. And what is behind the nose is basically a corporate takeover of the practice of law. If my clients go into Walmart or Costco and they ask for legal advice, it might be against some other entity that's associated with that corporation. I think I can see a big problem with conflict of interest. My conflicts list is very short. But you know, are the corporations going to have a conflict list that consists of everybody in the United States? I don't know. These, I, if, if you cannot bring yourselves to reject this, this proposal, please do extend the comment period to 120 days so we can get past the holidays and we have a lot more time to slog through 1,400 pages.
20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
I, I only learned about this a few days ago. I have not slogged through the 1,400 pages. And I really think that the people actually in the practice of law who have dedicated themselves to it for over 26 years really need more time to look at it and to weigh in.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Bill Sweringer. Mr. Sweringer, your microphone's available. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm an attorney for the last 40 years. I'm a member of Kayla. And I reiterate the comments of Aaron Joyce and Olivier Talio. And join in the dissent of Carol Shining and Steve Fleishman and Angela Grijhava, who is a lady who spoke earlier, who I, whose pleasure I've had the services of using. We already have an system in place. It's called paralegals. And paralegals operate under, under attorneys. And if there is a market for it, then I suspect that attorneys would be setting up offices where the work is done primarily by paralegals. But under the supervision of an attorney. And we do not have any reason to go setting up a whole new separate profit making organization with non lawyers being the beneficiaries of it. That creates so many problems with respect to the clients. I've had clients come to me from, who have been to paralegals and operating independently and so called document preparers. And those people did not have the legal knowledge to grasp or to advise the client as to a very fundamental underlying problem that made whatever work that that paralegal or document preparer did.
15 seconds remaining. Thank you.
So I think we have plenty the way that we are. If more funds were dedicated to, to legal aid and to organizations that already provide.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be, the next speaker will be Janette Valenzuela. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is attorney Janette Valenzuela. I am a solo practitioner for plaintiffs in San Bernardino County. I appreciate the board members' time and their full consideration of public comments. I support the dissent of the PPWG committee member Carolyn Shining in full, found on page 98 of the report. I urge you to read the dissents fully and ultimately vote no on authorizing this program. Attorneys do not view legal document writers and other paraprofessionals as competition. Rather, with these proposed changes, they could become a liability to the public and discipline could be costly. Attorneys speaking here are advocating for public interest and public safety. I would like to see better education of the pub, excuse me, to the public of resources available to them and further funding provided to those resources. Unfortunately, this program is both a threat to public interest and an irresponsible use of funds. If you choose to move forward with public comments, please consider extending the time to 120 days or more for full and meaningful comments. I urge you to vote no today. I thank you for your time and your serious consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Mia Monroe. Ms. Monroe. Microphone is available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mia Monroe. Since graduating college in 2005, I focused my career on empowering workers in historically marginalized communities through my employment with the government, nonprofit civil rights organizations and in private practice. Since I began practicing law in 2011, I've been exclusively representing workers from all over California and employment civil rights litigation. I encourage you to reject the paraprofessional program until some very important issues are addressed. Some of these issues are as follows. The failure to include a sunset to the pilot program. The failure to require data collection, which is similar to that required of legal aid entities to show whether the program is solving the needs of low income communities. The lack of wording in fee agreements that the consumer may be waiving important rights under California's extensive consumer protection laws that may have to proceed to trial, which may not be included sufficiently in training. The lack of a requirement to inform consumers. The lack of a requirement to inform consumers that they may be entitled to free legal aid or that self-help programs may be all that they need to solve their problems. The inability to vote on and further debate the name change from paraprofessional to another completely different name despite the state bar's efforts to seek outside marketing assistance from three separate private entities. The inability to understand the financial costs of the decisions that are being made as a result of the working groups recommendations so that they may be compared to legal aid expenditures as alternative options.
You have twenty seconds remaining. Thank you.
The vagueness and uncertainty of the application of the new licensee rules, given the failure to address the inclusion of dozens of comments to the attorney rules, existing statutory case law, and hundreds of formal opinions created by professional ethics lawyers, and the failure to create systems that will equip, that will create requirements for actually assisting low-income persons without charging them for services they cannot afford. Thank you.
Very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Mr. Troy Candyotti. Mr. Candyotti, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Hello. Thanks for allowing this public comment period. My name is Troy Candyotti. I'm a plaintiff's employment attorney in Los Angeles. I'm calling to voice my opposition to the program. There are other ways to address the justice gap in California than by wholesale creation of a second-tier semi-attorney class and all the unintended consequences that come from it. Many of these have already been addressed by other speakers. I would like to address one that hasn't, which is the bar can allow more people to become attorneys. California is notorious for having the hardest attorney licensing exam in the country, possibly the world. There are at least three thousand people who didn't pass the February twenty-twenty-one bar exam. From one bar exam alone, these are three thousand people who want to be fully licensed attorneys that graduated from law school, that took ethics courses, that passed both the moral character exam and the MPRE. This doesn't even include licensed attorneys from other states who want to work in California and help address this justice gap, but fear this notorious bar exam. Instead of considering these people, the bar is considering creating an inferior subclass of licensed legal professionals who can get firm profits. That to me just seems like a recipe for fraud and low-quality work and unintended consequences that we haven't even thought of. Please vote against this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Russ Sawyer. Mr. Sawyer, your microphone is available. You have two minutes.
Hello. Thank you, members of the committee, especially members Tony Shelby and on for extending comment. My name is Russ Sawyer. And I practice medical and I practice law in Santa Rosa. I also happen to be a physician. I'm calling to support the dissents that have been presented by members Fleishman and Shining in full. I'll make only three points. Many great points have been made. First, there is no statistical evidence that there's an attorney shortage in California. Certainly before a problem is addressed, you have to identify it. And it doesn't seem like that problem has been identified. In fact, the California Supreme Court has already taken steps to increase the number of attorneys by lowering the minimum passing rate for the bar exam beginning in October of two thousand and twenty. Secondly, concern about a two-tiered justice system certainly is present, that some won't be able to afford legal services while others can. Perhaps since free legal organizations and pro bono work together is readily available, the state bar could consider funding more for these organizations rather than starting a new program with truly unknown costs. Lastly, as both a physician and an attorney, I've witnessed firsthand what adding paraprofessionals will do to care and to the profession. Yes, it creates more practitioners. However, the knowledge gap present between physicians and physician assistants will be essentially the same as that between attorney and paraprofessionals. This deficit in knowledge will put clients of the paraprofessionals in jeopardy of inferior representation. I urge you to vote no or at least extend the public comment period out to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Ms. Beth Mora. Ms. Mora, your microphone is available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for staying as long as you have to heard all these comments. I'm sure it is exhausting, but I appreciate your time. This is an important issue. I want to introduce myself slightly different because my input is different. I am a plaintiff employment attorney. I practice throughout the state, but I ensure twenty-five percent of my time is volunteer pro bono time. That means that over the twenty years that I have practiced and before I graduated from law school, I I give twenty-five percent of my time to pro bono legal aid services. My input isn't because I want pro bono legally or organizations to survive. It's because I care. I repair the world every day. I am positive from what I have seen through the three, four, or five different organizations I volunteer with every year. That is over five hundred hours a year that I volunteer, that this program is a problem. It will not help. It will hurt. It will create problems. It will not close the gap. It will create a bigger gap. It will harm people. It will harm individuals, not just the individuals who need access, but it will harm the other side, the other parties. It will harm the court system. Part of what I love about legal aid systems is that we're actually trying to reduce the need to file a claim. We're answering questions. We're reducing the impact on the court system. We're helping the entire circle.
Twenty seconds remaining. Thank you.
Please help us. Help everyone. Protect the system. My five hundred hours a year is for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mr. Robert Worth. Mr. Worth, you have a microphone available to you and two minutes to make your comments. Thank you.
Thank you to the committee for taking all your time and being so patient with all of us. My name is Robert Worth, and I've been practicing law well over thirty years. I was going to be a teacher before. I have a master's degree in education, and I say that for a reason, which I'll get to shortly. I've been licensed to help people, and that's what I've done. I'm a member of CILA, California Employment Lawyers Association, that helped people who have been discriminated against and including pregnancy discrimination, as well as race and other things in jobs and as well in consumer law through CALA. I support the dissents of the PPWG committee members, Steve Fleishman, excluding the caps of these and exclusively and totally on Carolyn Shining, and they're found in full, as you've already heard, on pages eighty-four and ninety-eight of the report. I really urge you, the committee, to read these dissents and then vote no on authorizing the program to go forward until further comment has been made, as many others have already said, at least a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days to really allow full public knowledge and education. Each committee member has the right to vote no, and I hope you will consider that. Advancing paraprofessional programs, which is really posing a threat to the public interest and is an irresponsible use of of the state is not a good way to go. And this program meets these criteria by being a threat to public interest and that lack of responsible use of funds. Low-income communities are not going to be given an advantage or benefit by the use of paraprofessional programs, and it's not about competition. There's plenty of competition.
Thank you.
There's plenty of competition already with so many attorneys being out there that are fully educated and licensed. And there are legal aid programs that can help people with these very much better options. Vulnerable people should not be allowed to be.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mr. Andy Katz. Mr. Katz, you have a microphone in two minutes. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, board members. I practice employment law for plaintiffs in the Bay Area and participated in the paraprofessional working group subcommittee meetings regarding employment. I'm a member of the California Employment Lawyers Association and CAOC. That proposed paraprofessional program is not structured to be able to assist those in need. It will not improve access to justice and will present serious risks to low-wage workers seeking justice. The working group based its work in a study on the justice gap, which I agree is a real challenge. But the focus became this survey simplistically asking what general legal issue area people had concerns with and whether people stated they had difficulty finding an attorney. There was no investigation of case studies, which participants could have been served by a legal aid organization or which respondents unfortunately may not have had merit to their potential case or dispute. The work did not consider alternative approaches such as enhancing nonprofit clinics, only independently operating paraprofessionals without attorney supervision. Few members of that employment subcommittee understood employment law. Mr. Fleishman, who authored a dissent, was one such person. And I agree with that dissent except for his statements on fee caps. I also agree with Carolyn Shining's dissent in full. This program is unnecessary because non-lawyers can already assist claimants before administrative agencies like the Labor Commissioner or the or the Unemployment Insurance Appeals Board. This licensure is not actually enhancing.
Thank you.
California also provides for attorney's fees to the prevailing plaintiff in nearly all actions, and that incents lawyers to take cases with merit on a contingency fee basis. I don't expect that low-wage workers will be able to afford those paraprofessional services at hourly rates. To wrap up, I worked in a workers' rights clinic when I was going to law school.
The next speaker will be identified only on my screen as EO. EO, you have a microphone available to you and two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dear Board of Trustees, thank you for taking the time to listen to our comments. My name is Elizabeth Alvera. I am in support of this report and the program. I'm excited for it. I also agree with the supporting comments of Tom Gordon, Jason Solomon, Helen Bellamy, Angela Grijalva. And so I was a member of the paraprofessional working group. I sat on that group as a representative of the California Association of Legal Document Assistance. People who have been registered and bonded to help self-represented litigants since early two thousand. But I also sat on that working group as a woman of color, as someone who had to represent themselves in a court action, not by choice. No one wanted to take my case because it, you know, there there's no contingency for family law cases. But anyway, so I had to represent myself and my case took longer to resolve because of the incompetence of the attorney who represented my ex-husband. It was a long fight, but it was worth it. I have now used that experience to become a legal document assistant and help people in the same situation. I am proud about what I do. I am proud about the report that we have submitted. This new paraprofessional program is in alignment with the state bar's mission to protect the public and its commitment to provide greater access to justice and access to legal services for low and moderate income Californians. This program will give the self-represented litigants a choice, a choice to use who they want to represent them. In this case, someone who will listen.
Second remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. By regulating this new program, we're putting educated people with oversight from the state bar and licensed professionals that can help the people that really need the help. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker will be Marcia Guzman.
Hello, my name is Marcia Guzman, and I request that both Jose and Leah from the board pay attention to this. I understand it's been a long day and that people are looking at their phones. However, I am a plaintiff side attorney. I come from an immigrant family. I'm a woman of color. I'm also disabled. And I took this job as an attorney, or I pursued this job as an attorney to represent your low-income wage workers. However, what is being proposed today is not doing that. What you're going to do is create the same chaos that's being created that has been caused by notarios here in Los Angeles. So many family members and friends that I've known who have been ripped off by these notarios. There has not been enough public comment. There has not been enough looking into the situation. What should be looked at is providing attorney fees under the statute for different types of law that do not allow for this, perhaps like family law. However, bringing in people who are unlicensed, who do not have the education to do this work is going to be bringing in big, big businesses who are looking at just the bottom dime. And I'm going to tell you, not all attorneys are like that, including myself and several plaintiff's attorneys. And so on my behalf as a member of CILA, CAOC, CALA, and several other, including the federal bar, I am requesting that on behalf of immigrants, of poor people, minorities, and disabled people, that you vote no. Instead that the money be sent to nonprofits who can help these people who are both licensed attorneys and know the ethical rules and legal obligations around it. Again, thank you very much. My name is Marcia Guzman.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. The next speaker will be Mr. Timothy Loringer. Mr. Loringer, your microphone is available. It will be of two minutes.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Timothy Loringer, and I'm an attorney practicing in Los Angeles. I serve on the board of the Consumer Attorneys Association of California with others who are speaking today who have dedicated a large portion of their professional lives to ensuring that California citizens are well represented and have equal and robust access to the court system. I am speaking only for myself today. I have tremendous respect for paralegals and other non-lawyers who work in the field, and I rely upon these dedicated, smart, and competent professionals to provide excellent legal services to my clients. I join in the excellent points made in the dissent submitted by Carol Shining and Mr. Fleishman and the comments of like-minded people who have spoken today. The lack of information supporting the existence of an alleged gap in legal representation and access is very concerning. The failure to perform adequate and necessary research to see what the actual needs are of California citizens leads me to believe that the motivations behind this effort are suspect for some involved. This is like, this is the likely subtext that other another speaker mentioned. Those interests appear to be less focused on ensuring that the public is well represented in court and more with opening up the practice of a lot of big businesses of other and others with purely financial interests in the future. The dangers of non-lawyer ownership of law firms have been covered ad nauseam. However, it must be restated that is irresponsible or even reckless to allow non-lawyers to assert control over licensed attorneys by those who do not have the necessary education and do not have the same professional obligations to their clients in the state bar. Any gap in access to justice deserves attention, but this report does not give us those problems. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Mr. Andrew Sitzer. Mr. Sitzer, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is attorney Andrew Sitzer. I've been practicing fifteen years. I've built a small firm of four attorneys from scratch. I'm very opposed to this proposal for several reasons. I'm out there in the weeds every single day practicing what we call food law, whatever puts food on the table. I take cases with warranty issues and lemon law. I take contractor cases. I take cases where people have been ripped off. I will help with debt negotiate with debt collection cases. When I first started out, I was sharing my office with an attorney who did debt negotiations. I saw what I perceived as a big problem in that there was a non-attorney essentially running his office, and he was a figurehead, but at least he had a hundred percent control. If he had to give up forty-nine percent of that to a non-lawyer, he would have had no ability to say no to a lot of the very unethical things that that non-lawyer wanted to do in the interest of advertising and making more money. That's my biggest concern. There's also malpractice insurance. I pay a ton of money because my license is on the line. I went to law school and fought hard to pass the bar exam, and I pay malpractice insurance to make sure that if there's ever a problem uncovered, a hundred thousand dollar bond isn't going to cover it. And lastly, I think the firm names, I think there's a likelihood of confusion. Any name should require the name Power Professional after it, not Legal Services, not Law Corporation, not Legal. It should clearly say Power Professional in any use of the name.
Twenty seconds remaining. Thank you.
And also on rule thirty-two, there's a quid pro quo where these people are allowed to give gifts to tow truck drivers and other people as long as it isn't necessarily made for a referral, but quid pro quo, they're allowed to pay that tow truck driver. And also I'm worried about telemarketing and robocallers from these paraprofessionals under rule.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ms. Cynthia Craig. Ms. Craig, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Craig, and I am a plaintiff lawyer at Cabota and Craig, a partner at Cabota and Craig. I'm on the board for CAOC. And I currently serve as president of the Orange County Trial Lawyers Association. I appreciate the committee's time. I too support the dissent of the paraprofessional working program committee members, Mr. Fleishman in part and Ms. Shining in full. In particular, there are concerns with regard to the forty-nine percent ownership of law firms already addressed by others addressing this committee. I am highly concerned. I am highly concerned with the harm to consumers from the proposed Paraprofessional Working Group program. The program is a threat to the public interest because it will establish a two-tiered advocacy system, paraprofessionals for poor or lower income, and lawyers for the middle income and the wealthy. Low-income individuals represented by paraprofessionals will be at serious disadvantage and going against highly-paid defense attorneys. Over the past year and a half, the legal aid organizations from across the state have appeared at 120-plus Paraprofessional Program Working Group committees and subcommittees hearings to oppose the paraprofessional program. In fact, not one of the legal aid organizations offered support during these meetings. As actual providers for legal services to the lower-income population, legal aid organizations know the harm that will come to the underserved communities by the paraprofessional program. The Paraprofessional Working Program also heard from numerous district attorneys and prosecutors during its hearing, who said that they cannot adequately police the paralegals.
Twenty seconds remaining. Thank you.
And lawyers who already are licensed, and neither can they adequately police non-licensed to prey upon the vulnerable. They made it clear that low-income communities are preyed upon by serial criminals and fraudsters, and that only the worst get prosecuted.
The next speaker will be Mr. Travis Chow. Mr. Chow, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Board, thanks for listening to me today. I know we've heard a lot, so I just want to take a breath from all of this. I'm the Executive Vice President over at L.A. Paralegal Association, but I don't want that to guide my thoughts, so I'm speaking from my own perspective and experience. I work for a firm that deals with legal malpractice defense with attorneys. So I know firsthand that a bar card does not equate to good representation, and a lack of one doesn't mean that we can't provide meaningful representation either. When I walked into a legal aid-type facility when I was little, they rejected my case, not on merit, not on merit, but because they were too busy. No attorney, no paralegal, no anybody would help me. So I volunteered. I picked up the form, and I filled it out and said, "Well, let me work here. Let me help." They rejected that, too. So there has to be another option. There has to be other ways. Is this thing perfect? Of course not. This is a step in the right direction. And don't let the slippery slope-type arguments like, "Hey, this is going to ruin our profession", or "What if this? What if that?", lead you to a mistake in your decision. Nothing's perfect, and this certainly isn't. But it's needed, and it's just a step in the right direction. Ms. Shelby, Ms. Tony, and Mr. McLeod, thank you. Board, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Ms. Catherine Price. Ms. Price, your microphone's available. You have two minutes to make your comments. Your microphone is still muted. Need to unmute that. Ms. Price, there we are.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to public comment. I come before you to offer my support for the Triple LT program, and I'll tell you why. I chose a little bit different path. I went to law school, and very quickly, when I got there, realized I didn't want to be a lawyer. I wanted to be in family law. That was really my calling. And so for someone like me, who did receive a master's in conflict and dispute resolution, has been a mediator for over 10 years, and a paralegal with a specialty in family law, this is a perfect opportunity. I think this is exactly why you guys are doing this program, so you can have the opportunity for someone like me, who has education and experience, to be able to help bridge the justice gap. And this program will do that. I know that it will. Here's why I know. I currently have a mediation practice in Orange County. I also work for a nonprofit at the local family court. I'm here as an individual. In my private practice, I would tell you that probably upwards of 80% of the people that come to me for help come because they have had an attorney who was terrible. And I'm sorry to be so blunt about it, but I hear from all these attorneys who are saying, "Well, you know, you're going to water this down, and you're going to..." And I think they're respectfully just oblivious to the fact that there are so many attorneys out there that are doing shoddy work. And so they charge, and then people run out of money, and then they come to someone like me who can do the work and will do it right and get it done, and I charge a lot less. So you don't go to a nurse practitioner for heart surgery, you know? And if you need to get an attorney, there's certainly a time and a place for that, but it's not for everything in family law. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be...
Okay, Doug. Doug, let me interrupt. So when I last took a break from the public comment, I wrote down everyone who was on the list at that time, and there are four people who I think have signed up afterward, and I'm going to have to terminate this. I have a responsibility to keep this meeting going. So let me just double-check.
Sean, the only thing I would say is Stephen Hamilton and Fariba Sarush, who I see here, are on the working group. If not...
Okay, let's let them do it, but I'm going to take a photograph. These are going to be the last people, because we can't have the meeting filibustered.
The final four.
Please proceed.
With the final four.
Yes.
The next speaker will be Ms. Vida Hogan. Ms. Hogan, your microphone's available. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Vida Holgwin. I'm an employment plaintiff attorney, as well as representing small businesses with less than five employees. I also am a former state bar prosecutor. In my time at the state bar, we had a huge backlog of complaints against licensed attorneys. Shoddy work is not an ethics violation, but sometimes there are circumstances that bring the state bar in to oversee the kind of work, such as taking money and not doing the work. I can't even imagine what the complaint load would be once you add unlicensed paraprofessionals. This proposed change to the state bar rules and regulations to allow paraprofessional is not in the best interest of the consumer, despite the arguments to the contrary. My question is, who benefits most with this change? I think the state bar needs to look at the conflict of interest behind who and what corporate interest is behind this proposed change, and whether or not it truly benefits the consumer. Based upon my time with the state bar and what I saw in my years there prosecuting these cases, this is just going to make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. The next speaker will be Ms. Christina Bott. Ms. Bott, you have a mic available to you in two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I would like to thank you for your time today. I can't help but notice that the majority of the commenters today are attorneys, and yet, who this will affect the most are people like me, who are in the process of a dispute resolution and needing help. I am absolutely in favor of this proposal. I'm not in favor of extended public comments because I believe that is a way for... I know the Bar Association has the ability and the connections to add a lot more attorney comments, but what you need to do is also hear from the public and the people who would be best served. I have gone through three attorneys, spent all of my money, ran out of money, and had to go to a paralegal, who within days had my case organized and in such a better place for a small portion of the money. So I think this is a great program. It would serve people very well. And I think there would be ethics and guidelines in place, just as there is for attorneys. I'm sorry.
Twenty seconds remaining.
So I don't think those are valid concerns, because it would be regulated as well. And so, again, it seems to be a big red flag that it's all attorneys against this when the people affected still are having no voice.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Mr. Stephen Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Hamilton. I've been an attorney for 27 years. I've been a certified family law specialist for 17 years.
Mr. Hamilton, your mic is showing as not muted for me, but I'm not hearing anything. Let's go to Ms. Fariba Sarush and then come back to Mr. Hamilton, see if maybe there was a technical problem with his microphone.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Fariba Sarush. I am the supervising attorney for the Self-Help Center and Family Law Facilitators Office at Santa Clara County Superior Court. I have been with the court for over 23 years. Before that, I had a private practice in family law and probate litigation. It was my honor to be a member of the Paraprofessional Working Group and serve on the family housing regulations and pilot subcommittees. I support this program because it increases access to justice by providing another option for receiving legal services. Commentators opposing the program at each of the work groups' meetings and today stereotype the typical SRL, self-represented litigant, who would use services of a paraprofessional as indigent, desperate, and not very well-informed, where in fact, the only characteristic SRLs share is that they are going through a rough time in their lives. As a self-help legal professional in charge of a very busy self-help center that has already served over 30,000 self-represented litigants in 2021, I can tell you that SRLs can be of all income levels, can be well-informed, and in fact, intentionally elect not to hire lawyers to take care of their legal needs. This program offers an option, a choice to access legal services from a new group of legal professionals who be educated, licensed, and regulated. Commentators also assume that nonprofits and legal services agencies will represent all those who would use paraprofessional services, where in fact, those agencies will not be funded to help legal consumers who do not meet those agencies' income and issue qualifications.
Forty seconds remaining. Thank you.
Trying to start a divorce. This program also creates a new way for someone to pursue a career in law. My support for the program also depends on sunsetting the LDA legislation to eliminate bad actors in this field. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Stephen Hamilton returns to the queue after we lost his microphone. We're going to try to connect with him once again, Mr. Hamilton.
I'm here again. Thank you for giving me the second opportunity.
You're the last speaker.
Okay, so my name is Stephen Hamilton. I was a member of the Paraprofessional Working Group. I've been a licensed attorney practicing primarily family law for 27 years. I'm a certified family law specialist and have been for 17 years. I'm also not a law school graduate. I did the law office study program and read for the bar and passed at the first... So I don't come from a law school experience. I personally spent over 1,000 hours in meetings, subcommittee meetings, preparing for meetings, and reading the voluminous materials and position letters submitted. I did not join in all aspects of the report, and in fact, I am a signer on with Mr. Fleishman's dissent, and I have a particular concern about the recommendation that we allow paraprofessionals to appear in court, and particularly in family law matters. But I'm more concerned about the fact that, given the amount of time that was spent to prepare this document, to require public comment even within 60 days, I think is unrealistic. The Board knows how long this report is. I know how much time we all invested in preparing this report, and to run a public comment section for 60 days, in my opinion, will not give the public adequate time. I was a member of the Licensing Subcommittee, and from the comments heard today, I don't know that everybody realizes that you have to either be an already-licensed paralegal or a law school graduate to meet the minimum threshold to be a paraprofessional, nor that it then takes an additional at least semester of full 18 units of coursework and then 1,000 experiential hours working directly under an attorney in order to qualify to take the test to become a paraprofessional. But that's the kind of detailed information that's in the report that will need require more time to digest. So I'm just respectfully requesting and joining in the request of the California Lawyers Association that you do a more extended period of time for comment, given the length of the report and the significance of the issues raised by the recommendations in the final.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, and that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, Doug. All right, so we've been going about two hours, everyone, and I think we need a break. So let's take a break until 4:10 and resume at 4:10 sharp. Justice Petru actually is able to stay with us until 5, but we do have limited time with her. So please be back at 4:10.
I want to kind of give the Board a heads-up that Justice Petru and I, between the two of us, we do have quite a bit to present. I think it's really important that we do that, particularly in light of some of the public comment that we heard. As Stephen Hamilton alluded to, part of the issue seems to be a misunderstanding or a lack of clarity about what the program itself comprises. So what I'm going to do is start off by providing some context, and then I'm going to turn it over to Justice Petru to talk about the recommendations themselves. So I'm going to start with the history of the state bar's efforts to establish a new class of licensee. I'm going to talk about the need, potential solutions, many of which you heard about in public comment, lessons from medicine, drawing upon the fact that we hear from a doctor in public comment, and what we're asking you to do today. So the history of the state bar's efforts to license non-lawyers goes back to 1987. That's 35 years, I believe. A committee was established in 1987. A commission established subsequently in 1990. And you can see from the quote that I've included here that this is the language that was used as the basis for formation of this legal technician commission, again, all the way back in 1990. In 1991, the Legal Technician Commission submitted a proposal to the Board of Governors for a new class of non-lawyer licensee, specifically in the area of landlord tenant matters. Interestingly, this new class of licensee was to be regulated by the Department of Consumer Affairs pursuant to the proposal. It was defeated by the then-Board of Governors. Now you're known as the Board of Trustees. The quote that's included in the slide, it comes from the President of the Board of Governors at that time. And you can see, back in 1991, this was considered to be the most fractious and controversial issue that had ever come to the Board. And I think that's relevant today, based on the comments that you've heard. There was a long pause, and then in 2013, the Regulation and Discipline Committee established a limited license working group. And the Board, in fact, adopted resolutions in response to the working group's recommendations, including a proposal to establish a limited legal license. This result, also in 2013, the Board established a civil justice task force. That group issued its report in 2015, shortly before, in fact, that I came to the bar the first time. That endorsed the concept of a paraprofessional, called in that report, a limited license legal technician. In 2018, January 1, something very important happened. That is the legislatively-directed separation of the state bar, the separation of the trade association from the regulatory body. We no longer served members. We were purely a public protection agency. And since that time, we have begun to revisit a myriad of regulatory reform options designed to increase access to legal services. Specifically, in March of 2018, the Board added a new objective to its strategic plan, specifically directing staff to look at ways to increase access through licensing new types of professionals. In 2019, the state bar published the Justice Gap Study that you've heard about repeatedly today. And in March of 2020, this Board established the California Paraprofessional Program Working Group, not to consider whether or not to establish a new class of licensee, but rather to develop the parameters for. So now I'm going to talk about the need. So you've heard about the Justice Gap Study. What did it tell us? It told us that 55% of all Californians, regardless of income... It told us that 55% of all Californians, regardless of income, experienced at least one civil legal problem in their household in the last year. And you can see in this slide and then a couple of others that there's a distinction made between Californians at or above 125% of poverty, federal poverty level, or below. And the reason is, is that the time that the Justice Gap Study was conducted, that was the cutoff for the eligibility for free legal services. So you can see that there is some variance in the incidence of a civil legal problem in these two different income populations, but it is not as significant as you might expect. Also on this slide, you can see that certain other types of populations or segments of our community experience civil legal problems at greater rates than the average, including obviously at the top here, survivors of domestic violence or sexual assault. So what are the most common types of problems reported? In the red bars, you have overall. In the gray, you have at or below 125% of poverty. And in the blue, above that 125% of the federal poverty level. And what's really interesting here is that health, finance, and employment were the most common types of problems reported by Californians regardless of income. You also see income maintenance there, that is your benefits, unemployment and other kinds of public benefits, family law, obviously rental housing, and wills and estates. What do we know about the need? We know that Californians received inadequate or no legal help for 85% of these problems. And again, you see the breakout between those above and below 125% of the federal poverty level, and there is very little distinction there. So why aren't Californians getting help? One, lack of knowledge about what constitutes a legal issue. You heard about that from some of the public comment. We call that the knowledge gap. It is a very significant issue that the market has yet to resolve. Two, deciding to deal with a problem without, on their own. Folks decide that they'll deal with something on their own without help. And three, concerns about the cost of legal services, and certainly it is in relation to number three, that regulatory reform is most relevant. So why is it that the market is not responding to the needs of the individual legal consumer? For example, addressing the knowledge gap, you might think it's in the business interest of attorneys, for example, to figure out how to educate potential clients about their civil legal needs. Well, you can see here from this slide, this comes from a report that the State Bar, the Board of Trustees, actually commissioned in 2018 to look at the changing legal market itself, and it's really important, I think, for the board and for all of us to understand the macroeconomic context within these public policy decisions need to be made. So you can see here that the individual market, the individual legal services market, is this gray bar. You can see how much bigger the bars are for the business market and for government. So out of, for example, the $294 billion US legal market in 2017, 208 billion of that is comprised of business corporate law. Only 77 billion relates to individual consumers. So, and I show you at the top that the individual legal market has grown over the last 10 years by 17%, whereas the government and really the corporate sector has grown by more than double that at 37%. So there is a concentration of legal services and lawyers providing services to corporate clients. That is, of course, where the money is. Why, why else are folks underserved? It's the cost of attorney services. So you can see here that the average hourly rate of a California attorney, according to the 2020 CLEO study, and I have to give this a caveat and say, it's typically smaller or midsize firms that use CLEO as a law office management software tool. So therefore, this hourly rate is likely lower than the true average hourly rate in California. But according to the CLEO study, the average hourly rate is $338. I took an annual income of $75,000, and I took that based on several different data points that suggest this is the median household income in California. And you can see here that this worker would need to work 10 hours of pre-tax dollars in order to afford one hour of market rate attorney services. And you can understand why, for the average person, this is not a person that's qualifying for free legal services. They simply cannot afford to deal with any significant legal problem using a market rate attorney. So what are some of the potential solutions to this problem? We've heard about some of these today during public comment, that we should increase funding for legal aid. Well, the Justice Gap Study estimated that we would need 9,000 more legal aid attorneys to meet the needs of the population at 125% of federal poverty or below. 9,000 more. That is a sixfold increase in the number of legal aid lawyers in this state when compared to the 1,500 that are at least currently being funded by the State Bar through IULTA equal access dollars. Then you've heard, we should increase pro bono. Well, if you take a look at the unmet legal needs of all of those who don't qualify for free legal services, you can do the math and come up with this number. Every licensed active attorney in the state would need to provide nearly 240 hours of pro bono to meet the unmet civil legal need of those who do not qualify for legal aid. We don't have good data on the incidence of pro bono in California. It is not mandated. There is a rule of professional conduct that encourages 50 hours per year of pro bono for attorneys in California. And we have a study from 2016, the ABA California data, that says a whopping 54% of California attorneys do no pro bono annually, and of the remaining 44% that do, the average number of hours provided is 72. So we are nowhere near every licensed California attorney doing 240 hours of pro bono annually. You've also heard, not so much today, but we've certainly heard it at the working group, that we should be talking about increasing the supply of lawyers, and we can do that by reducing the cut score. As you all are aware, the Supreme Court recently reduced the cut score from 1440 to 1390, and this did increase the number of attorneys in the market. We can, we can quantify this. It's increased it by about 75 people per year. I asked staff to do the analysis of what the impact would be of lowering the cut score to the lowest rate that exists in the United States, that's South Carolina, at 1250. If we lowered our cut score to 1250, something that I do not believe our Supreme Court would do, we would add about 600 more lawyers per year in California. So you can just do the math here. Even if all 600 of those lawyers chose a career in legal aid, it would take you 15 years just to meet the unmet need for the population qualifying for free legal services. So I think it's clear that none of these potential solutions are scalable to achieve the massive problem that we have. So we have another potential solution that the bar has considered seriously since the separation of the sections, and that is regulatory reform. Today, we are going to be talking about licensing non-lawyers. So I want to take a moment to talk about lessons from medicine. One of the benefits we had on the working group is that the head of the Department of Consumer Affairs, a woman who used to also be the executive director of the Medical Board of California, was on our working group, and it caused us to break our own silos down so that we're looking not just at the legal profession, but at other similar situated, similarly situated professions in our sphere. So you see here that we have had an articulated tier of service providers in medicine since at least the 1960s, and California certainly since the 70s. And this quote that I put on the slide is a quote that I found in one of the original letters in support of establishing a nurse practitioner program in California. Findings show that the provider gap cannot be solved by initiatives like loan forgiveness and specialized residency programs. Think about the words that you might have to replace to make this applicable to the legal context. All right, I'm not ready for that yet. Just last year, the California Legislature considered and passed Assembly Bill 890. This bill expanded the scope of nurse practitioner practice, allowing nurse practitioners to practice in an unsupervised context. You can see on the slot, on the slide, several of the quotes that I pulled from bill analysis, letters submitted in opposition by medical associations and doctors. And I hope you'll bear with me. I'm going to play two minutes of testimony from the hearing on this bill. These are actually senators speaking about the need to modify scope of practice in medicine.
Leah, we can't hear, or I can't.
Oh, you can't? Can no one hear?
Leah, you're sharing, have you checked the box for sharing screen and sharing sound?
I don't know how to do. Is that in Zoom?
It's, yeah, it's in Zoom, and when you select the share button, there's a, there are checkboxes at the bottom left. One is share sound, the other is share screen.
Sorry. I was on a roll. Okay, let me, it just says share. Oh, share sound. Okay.
I just want to say that this particular measure has been a really tough measure for me, because scope of practice bills inherently create a conflict between two critical goals, patient safety and access care. And you know, I come from a family of dentists and, and doctors, so I'm aware of this. I wanted to make it clear that I have been opposed to similar measures in the past, for example, SB 323. You know, when I was in the Assembly BNP and it failed, and because it was just so important that we not sacrifice patient safety. Also in this bill, there were a number of concerns raised by doctors and medical professionals that weren't addressed in the bill. But I got to say that times are different, and, and you know, maybe my decision would be different if, you know, we weren't in a global pandemic. But as we navigate this, this pandemic, I believe we need to give renewed attention to these creative ways to create more access and affordability in the healthcare system.
There is evidence that when you reduce the, when you, when you change the scope to allow independent practice, that it does increase the number of practitioners that go to rural and underserved urban areas. Is it a magic bullet? Absolutely not. But if we had a magic bullet, we would have done this long ago. The assertion that this is dangerous really concerns me because I believe it is based on, on, on fear, trying to, to get people to be fearful of something. But I have repeatedly asked for evidence that this is dangerous, and no one has provided me anything except anecdotal stories. And I could probably turn around and provide anecdotal stories about doctors or dentists or whatever. But it is, it is, that does trouble me.
All right. So why are we so much further along in medicine? I believe it is because healthcare is considered a fundamental need and, and dare I say, a right in our very progressive state, and that is something I and I'm sure all of you wholeheartedly agree with. Reform in the medical sector has been driven by the legislature as a result. And because of that legislative push over strong opposition from doctors, you have a fully articulated practice tier in medicine. You have nurse practitioners, you have physicians assistants, and you have doctors. So I ask you, I ask myself, and I ask all of us, is access to the legal services that you need to exercise your rights, is it discretionary? If yes, then the status quo works, and if no, then we must embrace reform. So what are you being asked to do today? You're being asked to receive a report and to put it out for public comment. You are not being asked to approve a program or to implement a program or to allocate funding for a program. So I wanted to close with that, just to make sure that we were being really clear about the limited nature of, of your requested action today. And with that, I am going to turn it over to our amazing chair, Justice Petru with the First District Court of Appeals. I have to say that she has been a fierce leader of a very, very difficult process, as many of you might have a flavor for, based on the public comment that you heard. And without her leadership and stewardship, we would not be where we are today. Justice Petru is going to walk you through the actual recommendations themselves, and we are going to close out with a timeline for the project, which, of course, you all may decide, decide to change based on the request to extend the public comment period. So with that, I will turn it over to our chair.
And thank you, Leah, and thank you to everyone for inviting me to come this afternoon. I know it's heading into late in the day, and I know this is a complicated proposal with a lot of subparts, and so I would ask for people to chime in and ask questions. You'll see, once we actually start with the PowerPoint, that it's structured, kind of macro level and going smaller and smaller. So hopefully, I'll answer your questions in the course of doing that, but I would like to encourage people to chime in, in part because I don't want to just hear myself talk at nauseam. In regards to chairing this committee, it's really been an honor, and I thank you all. Thank the State Bar for asking me to step in as chair at the end of last year. I would say, you know, I have not come into it with a particular goal in mind in the sense of any particular outcome or sense of proposals. I'm not here to represent myself, or certainly to represent the court in any capacity, but to set forth for you what we've done, which is what you've asked us to do, which is to put together what the committee as a whole believes to be the best, most robust paraprofessional program, holding true the need for access to justice and also consumer protection. And I think it'll be self-evident as I go through it, that both of those things were held very near and dear throughout what has been a very intensive process, and I have to stop for just one moment. I don't know if people know how much time Linda Katz and Leah Wilson have put into this, but it's been an extraordinary number, certainly thousands of hours, day and night. Everyone's been, you know, I, I'm the person who will send the email on the weekend. I get a response immediately, and I know that's been the case for everyone that's reached out to them, not only me. So it's been a massive, massive amount of work. With that, if we could please start the slides, which I don't have control of. And while we're waiting for those to get up, just a little bit about me. Not that I matter in this process, but just so you know, I am currently on the Court of Appeal. I was previously on the Alameda County Trial Court. I was previously in public service as an assistant US attorney, and I also worked in private practice. So I have a background that encompasses civil and criminal and state and federal and defense and prosecution, which I think was probably part of the reason that I was asked to chair this, but was certainly helpful to me in speaking with everyone and trying to help folks put a proposal together. All right, so we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. And you all know what the charter was. It was for us to balance the dual goals of ensuring public protection and increasing access to legal services while designing an appropriately regulated program. We did not have a mandate of figuring out how much would it cost to increase legal aid? How many more attorneys would be needed? What should the bar cutoff number be? You know, those various things that Ms. Wilson touched upon briefly was certainly not part of our work, so we did not do that. Also not part of our work, quite honestly, was saying, should there be a program or not? I mean, I think there are many people on the committee who would say there should be, but we really took to heart exactly what you asked us to do, which is, what is the best program you think that we could put out to the public? Next slide, please. And we develop recommendations in each of these areas, which I'm not going to sit here and read to you. I think it's better if we just move ahead and get to the meat of the matter. And again, we're going to go into more detail, but just briefly, in regards to licensing, we went through who, you know, someone mentioned in regards to public comment that there may not be an understanding of the proposal, and I don't blame people who made public comment for that. Okay? I mean, we've been having public meetings, but this is a lot of information, and the final proposal was not put together until recently. So I certainly don't blame people for that in any way, shape, or form, and I think a lot of legitimate concerns were raised. But I would ask everyone to, who, who's with this group, to really sit and think about what the requirements really are that we've put forth, you know, including that someone be a JD or a paraprofessional or the various things that we'll talk about, including the fact that unlike what was said in one public comment, no one gets to go to trial. Someone said there was a default position. Someone said there was a default position of going to trial, that's actually a 180. No one gets to go to trial for anything. Likewise, there's no ability to do employment law. So I just ask, and I know it's late in the day, that folks give this as much attention as they're able to at this point. So we went through detailed requirements for licensing, for regulation, including the putting together a set of rules of professional conduct, largely modeled on, but certainly not entirely duplicative of the rules of professional conduct for attorneys, continuing legal ed, all of that that we'll go through, likewise, discipline, how to roll it out, including a phased implementation specific to certain parts of the state, and also naming options. Next slide, please. Now, in regards, and this is just a few slides talking about how did we consider the goals in these various areas, and then we'll go into more detail, and I'd also invite Leah to just jump in. I may very well, at this point in the day, skip something I shouldn't or misspeak, and so I would really invite her, or Linda, or anyone else to set me straight. So in regards to licensing and thinking about increasing access to justice, we decided that the program should, the educational components of the program should be provided either through community colleges, which is a wonderful platform statewide available, or through California accredited and registered law schools. And we've talked about, as I'll tell you when we go into detail, how to leverage previous education and previous practical training in the areas. In order to increase the odds that the group of people who become paraprofessionals are really good at what they're doing, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and pretend that every, if we go, if you move this program forward and the legislature adopts it and moves it forward, I'm not going to pretend that every paraprofessional is going to be an amazing practitioner, just like not every attorney is, and just like not every judge is for that matter. So in regards to protecting the public, we do want to limit licensure to people who either have gone to law school and successfully received their Juris Doctor, or gone and received an LLM, or have been working as paralegals, or are LDA's, the Licensed Document Assistance. And also, in regards to every specific licensing area, there is specific education and training, specific subject matter testing, and really important from, from our point of view, it is not a general license. It's very, very different from someone who has a JD and can go out and represent someone in any area of law, regardless of whether or not they have any education in that particular area or not. These are very tightly delineated areas of licensure with very specific requirements. And then, of course, there must be a moral character determination required for anyone. Next slide. Now, in regards to practice areas and scope of license, we wound up focusing on the areas with the greatest unmet need, where we felt that paraprofessionals could appropriately assist individuals who need help with understanding that they are not full JDs and did not pass the bar exam. What area, which we'll talk, and we'll talk about each of these, family law, enormous need. I think we are well aware that in the vast majority of courts across the state of California, the vast majority of people are self-represented. And that is what we're talking about. We are not talking about a population of people in an area of law where they're being represented by counsel, they are largely self-represented. Similarly, landlord tenant, collections, and wage and hour, and we'll talk about, again, that's a limited scope. In-court representation is generally allowed with some carve-outs in particular areas that does not include trials. So in every area we have carved out, we went through pretty much every single task that someone could do who's doing any one of these subject areas, and did a line-by-line determination of whether the committee felt it was appropriate or inappropriate for it to be included in the scope of work. You have that, of course, as part of our very voluminous, as need be, packet that was given to you. It is truly a line-by-line delineation. And in some areas, the entire practice area had to be eliminated. We know that there is a lot of need, for example, in employment law, but we did not feel that was an appropriate area for paraprofessionals, given the nature of the work, given the trials that you need to do, and other matters. And again, as I mentioned, no jury trials. Next slide. Okay. Attorney supervision is not required. That's the big difference between paraprofessional, one of the, to me, really, the key difference. Paraprofessional versus paralegal. Paralegal, you have to be supervised by an attorney. It does allow, and as you heard from public comment, this, I do think, was one of the most, if not the most controversial matter in our working group. As part of the packet that we provided to you, we included not only the different votes that were taken, but how did people vote, so that it is readily available to use, readily discernible by you, whether things carried with a, close to everyone agreeing, or whether it was a closer vote. I don't remember what the vote was on this, I want to say it was something like nine to five, I could be misspeaking. But you can see where it's tighter, and this area was a more controversial area. And then caps are imposed only on contingency fees. I will note that individual members, even who were against co-ownership of firms, or generally against the program in general, were also against caps being imposed. Now, in regards to protecting the public, there's the bond requirement, the security fund fee, of course, continuing education. Different from attorneys and annual reporting of fees that are charged, because as part of the oversight function, we think that it would be really a positive thing to actually get in for more information than we're getting from attorneys about what fees are being charged, so we can have a sense going forward as the program is evaluated and expansion potentially contemplated, what's actually happening. The, you will see the disclosure, informed consent, and written agreement provisions have a great deal of detail in order to ensure that consumers are aware of the possibility of free or low-cost legal assistance. You know, there's this issue out there about people not knowing, and also the limitations of what the paraprofessional can do. Next slide. And then, in regards to discipline, we propose a hearing panel, not a State Bar Court, to make disciplinary recommendations and decisions, in part to reduce the cost of the system, but also because we think it will simply function better. And we do believe that paraprofessionals themselves should serve on the hearing panels to make the system as fair and equitable as, as possible. The investigation and charging is very similar, parallel to the attorney discipline system, and the discipline standards mirror the system. Although it's actually more robust, there are more graduated sanctions available. Unlike for attorneys, the proposal is no private discipline. The working group believes that any discipline should be public. And we had a number of recommendations that were outside the scope of the paraprofessional program per se, that we thought would be helpful for increasing the enforcement of the unlawful practice of law, having to do with how these crimes are charged, statute of limitations, and related issues. But in thinking about the program as a whole, we thought it was important to also share with you the thoughts that we had about that, even if it wasn't strictly within our jurisdiction. Next slide. And then with the rollout, you'll see that we recommend far northern California and central California. I will say, in regards to far northern, you know, there are a number of more rural counties, and we heard time and again, both from judges and practitioners in those areas, that it's even harder in those counties as compared to somewhere like Los Angeles or San Francisco to access legal aid or other representation. Initial rule of law is limited to 10 counties, limited practice areas, we'll go through all of that. But the idea was to put it out in a limited format, so we could see what is happening, so that you can make the assessment moving forward. Next slide. And then in regards to outreach and education, we do want to, and very much are cognizant of the need to promote the availability of other services, whether it be legal aid, right to counsel, veteran services, et cetera, and extremely cognizant of the need that the public have clarity about the limited scope. You know, there were a number of people who mentioned various communities being taken advantage of by people who represent themselves as notaries. I personally am not using the term notario. I've heard from more than one person during our meetings that that can be a term that is offensive, and that is not what I want to do in any way, shape, or form. So I will just note that I think part of the issue with that is that the public has not been educated about what people can and cannot do. And we have taken a lot of steps, I think, as a committee, to try to ensure that that would not be the case here. Next slide.
Justice Petru, I could just, yeah, because you invited me to. I wanted to make a point about the Health Consumer Alliances. You may recall from my presentation that health was one of the top three areas of unmet civil legal need for all Californians regardless of income. But you will notice, and you saw in the report, health is an excluded practice area. And the reason is that through our research, the work of the working group, we learned that the Health Consumer Alliances exist and provide free legal services to all Californians regardless of income, in specifically the issues, the health-related needs that came up in the Justice Gap study. So I make this point to say, there was a great deal of attention paid to not creating a program that would potentially compete with a legal, a free legal service truly available to all Californians. And this is an example, and it is why health is not included as a recommended practice area.
Thank you, Leah. Next slide, please. And then, you know, there's the name, which we, we have some slides more detailed on that as well. We decided to provide you with three options for names, and we can talk about that, although I don't know that that's going to be the focus of our conversation today. Next slide, please. All right, just, I'm certainly not going to go through and read who the working group members were. It was a wonderfully motley crew, and I say that in a positive sense. It was a number of people with a lot of different backgrounds, different practice area backgrounds, different experiences, some attorneys, some not, some in the education field, public members, some judicial officers, people from all different kinds of counties. So it was really a great group of people who all worked very hard and brought their great variety of experiences to the table, and did a very good job, I thought, of actually listening to each other and working in a collaborative manner, even if at the end of the day, they weren't going to agree with each other about certain aspects of the program. Leah, did you wish to say anything about the working group composition before I move forward?
No, just everyone was an amazing contributor, and keep it tied in mind, let's move on.
Yes. Briefly, there were 20 working group meetings, 17 subcommittees, and of those 123 subcommittee meetings, the majority of these did take place from about November. There were certainly work that happened between March and November, but the majority of this took place during the time of my involvement, so I have familiarity with what happened with the group. Next slide. And this just goes, this is just showing how we're going to go over the recommendations, which we'll just move into, given the time. All right. And Leah, if you don't mind, just going through the included practice areas.
Okay.
And you're muted?
All right, I can go through them really quickly, muted. Collateral criminal, which is expungements, reclassifications, and infractions. Public defender's office is generally not funded to do this work, and a great deal of need in this area. Consumer debt and general civil. I will say that there is a tremendous amount of need in the collection space. I think there was universal agreement about that, but also a great deal of concern about scope of practice here. And this is an area where in-court representation has in fact been restricted. So a lot of the contemplated activity of the paraprofessional is to negotiate with creditors outside of the courtroom space. Also, general judgment enforcement is included, an area of great need in civil, and name and gender change, an included practice area. Employment and income maintenance. So employment, very limited to wage and hour proceedings. As Justice Petru referenced, we heard significant testimony about the complexities of representation in the employment law space. Understanding that even though this was a very high area of need, according to the Justice Gap study, the paraprofessional scope limited to wage and hour cases, and those, of course, are handled at the EDD or the DLSC, the Labor Commissioner. But there is a great deal of need to enforce those judgments in Superior Court. Unemployment insurance proceedings at EDD, and other public benefits proceedings. I will note that non-attorneys are already authorized to represent parties and administrative agency proceedings in the state, but this scope of practice will allow a paraprofessional to provide legal advice in preparation for those hearings, and we can move on. Family, children in custody. So this is kind of the big kahuna, along with housing for this program, given the high incidence of self-represented litigants in the family law space. That being said, there are exclusions, and those are detailed in the report. And I think that's important, again, to emphasize the amount of attention that the working group paid to what should be authorized, given the licensing and experiential requirements for the paraprofessional. In housing, you have unlawful detainer. Again, I don't think that would come as a surprise, but also lien clearing, and this is an interesting issue, an area of need, an area that impacts homeowners. And we heard some interesting testimony about folks that might be house-rich and cash-poor, people that lose their homes when they do not have estates, but also because they have liens on their homes that perhaps their children cannot take care of or clean up. And this, I know in my own area where I live, has contributed to a great deal of gentrification. So lien clearing is included in the scope of practice under housing. We can go forward.
Okay, so we can go back and forth a little bit. In regards to licensing, again, this has been mentioned, this is not just anyone. This is someone who has a Juris Doctor or Masters in Law from the, from a law school that is accredited or registered at the ABA or California, or a paralegal is qualified by the Business and Profession Code, or a legal document assistant who's qualified pursuant to its relevant Business and Profession Code. That's the ground floor, right? We're not going anywhere without that. So once you have that, you also need to have, or have taken within the recent past, if, for example, you went to law school, three units of ethics and professional responsibility, three units of pre-trial discovery and evidence, three units of court procedure, three units of court advocacy, and one unit of trauma-informed representation. That's a total of 13 units. And Linda or Leah, do you want to remind me of approximately how many hours there are per unit? What is the expectation?
Yeah, I was just looking for that. Linda, can you do that?
It's 144 hours per unit.
Right, and that means it's a combination of in-class and outside of class would comprise that.
I'm sorry, it's 144 hours for a three-unit course.
Right, so 144 hours for three units. And, you know, if you, if you think about it, that's like if you were in college, and it's what you think of as the full-time class, right? Where you usually have a few hours a week of in-class, and you know, the rule of thumb is three hours of work outside of class for one hour inside of class. So it's a lot of hours, which we felt, and these are the, honestly, we felt these were the minimum requirements. One may choose to put in more, but this is where we felt like everyone needs to do this. If one is going to be a paraprofessional licensed to do collateral criminal, then they would also need three units in expungement, reclassification, and infractions. And as you can see here, if it's consumer debt and general civil, it's a number of units in that area that have to do with it. Next slide, please. Likewise, in family, it would be an additional 13 units. On top of the 13, the first 13 we talked about is for everyone. So it's actually a total of 26 units, for example, for one to be licensed in family, children, and custody. Six units of family law and procedure, two on adoption, two on violence prevention, three on conservatorships and guardianship. I don't want to just sit here and read you slides, but I want to emphasize the point that there was thought given to minimum educational requirements for each area, and that one would have to get licensed per area. So one, someone who is licensed as a family, children, and custody paraprofessional, or whatever name is chosen, cannot then go out and do housing work. Next slide. There's also an experiential requirement of 1,000 hours completed over at least six months of time. And 500 of those must be in the practice area of intended licensing, and it has to include, I'm not sure why the trauma-informed training is here.
Because it's, it's got to be part of the practical, experience has to include trauma-informed work.
Work, right, so it's work rather than training per se. Okay, that, that makes sense to me. And then, of course, there will be testing. Um, and then of course, there will be testing in each area that will be matter-specific and a professional responsibility examination. More character, again, no surprise to you, includes fingerprinting and a background check. Um, it is the committee's recommendation that no one who has been disbarred or who resigned with charges pending in any jurisdiction should be eligible to be a paraprofessional.
And I'll just pause here and say that for a lawyer that today, there is no experiential requirement in order to uh, be licensed in the state of California. There is also no subject matter specific exam. There is, it's volunteer if you want to become a specialist, but once you take the bar exam, you're considered to have a general license. And you can hang up your shingle and practice in any area, even if you have never taken one class in that subject matter in law school. So I think it's important to uh, highlight the distinction here.
Next slide, please. Okay, so as we've, I think, made quite clear, no jury trials. Then the default is that one could provide full in-court representation with certain carve-outs. Um, I believe Leah already uh, touched on the fact that in consumer debt and creditor harassment, there is no Superior Court litigation. It's more about negotiation and trying to get things resolved, which is usually how those kinds of issues hopefully do get resolved, and that's in the interest of the consumer to do it that way. And then for family, children and custody in regards to um, emergency custody and visitation orders. One could only have in-court support. What is in-court support? In-court support would be that the paraprofessional can sit at counsel's table to support and advise the client and can answer direct procedural questions from the judge. We heard from a number of people. Um, I, I mean, I, I had the question of how helpful is that really? And we heard from a number of people that because these are such incredibly emotionally charged and difficult hearings, that just having someone with you can be extraordinarily helpful in moving the matter forward. And also I can certainly say from my experience, for example, of when I um, presided over a family law court, it is very emotional and difficult for people and folks get confused with some of the procedural aspects. And so part of the in-court support would be the ability to respond to questions from the court about procedural issues. Uh, similarly, DV domestic violence hearings would be domestic violence hearings involving children are limited to in-court support. And I, I just want to make it clear, we're talking about civil family. Okay, these are domestic violence hearings um, in, in the family courts. These are not criminal DV hearings in the criminal court. These are the civil hearings. Then housing, um, only again in-court support for unlawful detain, oh, excuse me, unlawful detainer bench or jury trials. And Leah, did you want to add something here?
No.
Okay, next slide. Alright, then in regards to uh, proactive regulation. That is the one hundred thousand dollar surety bond and a client security fund. Um, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether there should be malpractice insurance required, and Leah, I do want you to jump in on that.
Okay, um, well, the state bar, the, has considered uh, the question of mandatory malpractice insurance for attorneys on um, several occasions, most recently, I believe in two thousand eighteen. Um, the board, uh, the, actually, the, the working group that was established to study that issue did not recommend a mandatory malpractice insurance. There was a significant amount of debate in this working group as to whether or not malpractice insurance should be mandated for paraprofessionals, even though it is not mandatory for attorneys. And ultimately, the decision was not to mandate malpractice insurance, but instead to require a bond. And bonding requirements are quite prevalent for all other types of professional licensees, uh, that are not currently in place for lawyers.
Alright, thank you, Leah. And then in regards to continuing legal education, it's thirty-six hours every three years. Twenty-eight hours in the practice area, four hours of ethics, uh, one hour competence, one hour elimination of bias, one hour trauma-informed practice, which I'll note, I do not believe that is a requirement for attorneys. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in fact, the thirty-six hour requirement for paraprofessionals matches the MCL requirement for legal specialists in California. It is much higher than the requirement for a quote-unquote "regular attorney." Um, so the MCL requirement is higher, the requirement for trauma-informed practice, uh, MCL does not exist for attorneys. Nor are regular attorneys required to get MCL in their practice area. As you know, I think Justice Petru can, there's the mad rush to complete your MCL hours before the deadline on any topic. Paraprofessionals will not.
And another area where attorneys are not required, but uh, paraprofessionals would be is the practice management. Because i- it's not easy, you know, it's not easy to go into business by yourself or with others, and we thought it was important um, to include that. Then the proactive regulations, they're also, um, actually, why don't you talk about this one, Leah?
Okay, I'll just um, note again the differences uh, between paraprofessional and attorney regulation. There, obviously, we, we are talking about a lot of voluntary resources. But you see annual reporting requirements, Justice Petru uh, highlighted these earlier. Fees charged to clients, paraprofessionals will be required to report on fees charged. Something that is not required of attorneys, a very important uh, requirement uh, to en- enable us to take a look over time as, to determine, is this an affordable option that we've actually brought to the market? So that's what I would highlight in that section.
Next slide. And the rules of professional conduct, um, again, modeled on the attorney rules, but different. The informed consent, the disclosure, the written agreement requirements are significantly stronger uh, than what lawyers are required to do. And as you'll see when you actually go through uh, what the committee recommends, they're designed to ensure that the consumer is very clear on what the paraprofessional is and is not, in other words, is not a lawyer. The limitations on what the paraprofessional can do and the potential availability of services at no cost. Uh, fee sharing with lawyers in different firms. For example, a paraprofessional who works for herself or in a group of paraprofessionals and uh, refers a matter over to a lawyer in a different, in a separate firm, there can be no fee sharing in that context. However, and again, this was, I think, perhaps the most controversial topic. Co-ownership with lawyers would be allowed so long as the paraprofessional ownership cannot exceed forty-nine percent and the paraprofessionals do not um, run the firm essentially. They do not have a leadership uh, management authority within the firm. Next slide. So for example, and again, this is only the highlights, but they are important highlights. The paraprofessional is required at the outset to make it clear that the paraprofessional is not a lawyer. What area of practice uh, are they licensed in? What limitations on the scope of that practice? Make it clear that the client may need to hire a lawyer if services are required beyond the scope of practice. Again, the discussion of free or low-cost services that are potential availability. They are required, you know, we talked about the fact that attorneys uh, are not mandated to have malpractice insurance. But pa- paraprofessionals under the proposal would have to actually disclose whether they do or do not have malpractice insurance. Uh, the existence of any financial arrangements related to the representation that paraprofessional has with others. What kind of services are be, to be provided? What's the estimate of costs? Information about the surety bond and how to file a claim and information about how to file a complaint with the state bar. Next slide. Uh, diving a little bit more into the fee divisions, you've heard people mention this one point five point one. Uh, should the paraprofessionals and lawyers in different firms be allowed to share the fees? And again, a reminder, the answer from the group was no. Uh, we did talk about the fact that it would encourage paraprofessionals to develop relationships with those attorneys who could then provide services and, and be a source of referral. And that could, there could be some billing efficiency for the client. However, uh, the overall feeling was that this was too vulnerable to abuse and that it was something that the committee wanted to stay away from. Next slide. Now, in regards to financial agreeing arrangements, excuse me, with lawyers and non-licenses in the context of a shared practice, again, the answer to the other one was no. The answer to this one, while controversial to some degree, was yes. Uh, with the, really the thought that this would support a partnership between lawyers and paraprofessionals. And if lawyers and paraprofessionals could get together and work together on matters, that that would likely result in the greatest efficiencies, the greatest cost savings to the clients. Um, there was conversation about the potential vulnerability to abuse and the fact, and um, I believe it was um, Stephen Fleishman who mentioned this. The concern about paraprofessionals sharing in fees for services that are not authorized themselves to provide. And again, the recommendation, while it is to allow co-ownership, the, it has to be minority ownership and they may not supervise lawyers and they may not direct lawyers' professional judgment and rendering services. Uh, Leah, anything further on this?
Only to say that this kind of provision has, uh, since I'm on a, a medical parallel kick, has been in place in medicine, I believe, for over twenty years. Forty-nine percent ownership allowed um, between doctors and nurses and there, there's a of uh, folks and entities that can practice along with doctors.
Next slide. Alright, um, in regards to the prevention of unauthorized practice of law. These were simply recommendations that we wanted to share with you um, in the hope that it would engender some conversation, hopefully some forward movement on some of these. Uh, the committee felt, and I, I think this was pretty universal, while they're, yeah, I, I can say it was universally agreed uh, that there should be harsher penalties for the unlicensed practice of unauthorized, excuse me, practice of law. That felony prosecution should be available for first-time UPL convictions. You know, depending on what exactly happened, that the prosecutor should have the ability to charge it as a felony. Uh, that there should be expanded state bar authority to address the unauthorized practice of law by non-licenses. Not just folks who are licensed. And to potentially extend the statute of limitations for UPL prosecutions. Um, in regards to resource and funding. Uh, you know, we thought there would hopefully be additional funding and resources for law enforcement and for the state bar to investigate and prosecute these kinds of cases and the creation of a victim restitution fund for the victims. Then I'll turn it to Leah for regulation and public education.
So the record-keeping um, requirements for paraprofessionals will enable us to better uh, monitor whether or not there is um, an incidence of UPL particularly with relation, in relation to uh, acting outside of the scope of authorized practice. So that is a requirement that's being imposed on the paraprofessional uh, specifically uh, in relation to the UPL concerns uh, that have been raised by many stakeholders. And then, I don't know if you wanted me to just finish off with the education. But just some recommendations for the board to consider around increasing the awareness about the paraprofessional license, the limited scope, um, and the fact that the paraprofessional licensee exists. And therefore, you should be going to the state bar website if in fact this program gets implemented to determine that somebody actually is a licensed paraprofessional. Uh, and that that kind of function, resource is not in place today for um, many uh, of that legal space professionals uh, that are acting out there unregulated by the state bar.
I think we can go to the next slide. Um, in regards to the licensee name, just briefly, we, this is, these are the steps that we took. We first met with a branding expert to start brainstorming a list of potential names. Thirty, with the uh, considerations that we had about wanting to cause wanting a name that would be clear rather than confusing to the public and not only in English, of course. So we came up with a list of thirty-two names originally. Uh, the working group members and staff were surveyed. They ranked these thirty-two names. They, well, they gave ranking based on their few favorites. Had the opportunity to offer alternative names and had the opportunity to provide feedback and give suggestions. From that, we winnowed things down to eight options from the initial thirty-two. And again, it was, the whole group was surveyed again, similarly to the first survey. Um, then we sent the seven name options that we came from out of that to professional translation services. And I believe we have the Spanish translation at this juncture. I do not believe that we have them in the other languages yet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We can go to the next slide and just take a look at them.
Right, so, um, we know, we had a lot of conversation about how not to cause confusion. You know, part of the reason that the name paraprofessional itself was not a big favorite is, what does paraprofessional mean? Um, you know, paralegal is confusing for some people. A paraprofessional, is that kind of a professional but not really? And, and in what area? I mean, it's just not um, a name that worked well. And, and there were some committee members who favored it, but it was not an overall favorite. The three that we landed on were a limited licensed legal practitioner, which of course would wind up being triple LP. A limited legal practitioner, which I'll say gave me a little pause with the LLP and how that might come across, it's not a business. Or a limited legal advisor. And then we have the Spanish translations uh, on the right side. And I, you know, today is not the time, if anyone ever wanted to go through all the various names and all the considerations, we could. But I don't think there's the bandwidth to do that right now. Leah, I don't know if you wanted to come, comment on particular considerations.
No, just to say, this is the first time since I've been at the state bar that there's been this much intentionality around naming and naming really with that unauthorized practice of law concern in mind. Um, and I think this, that the working group established a best practice that we should use going forward. Uh, using a branding expert, in the first instance, we were lucky to get one at no cost. And uh, then taking this to professional translators, specifically talking about the need to avoid a name that suggested in Spanish uh, at the first pass that this person might be an attorney, so I'm proud of our.
Well, and it's, it's no surprise that the word limited appears in each of the recommendations right off the bat. Alright, next slide. Um, the discipline system. Um, Leah, why don't you go ahead and go through this one?
We're almost, we're almost done. So the discipline system mirrors the attorney discipline system at the onset. Uh, with the idea being that OCTC would conduct intake of investigation and charging. It deviates from the discipline system at the um, hearing level uh, with a new hearing panel structure established and appeals conducted by the paraprofessional licensing and oversight committee. So the state bar court is not involved in this process. Uh, we believe this will make the process uh, less costly to administer and oversee. And cost concerns were important to us in light of, of what I think you've heard a little bit about and what's in the report. Some of the lessons learned from uh, the state of Washington. Um, also important, I think, is what you see in this public records section. There was a lot of work done to determine what should be public, what should be private. And as you heard earlier, there is no private discipline in this context as opposed to in the attorney space. And what should be on the website. And so we've done work here that really, I think, is leading the way for the type of clarity that we need on the attorney's side. Um, we've also introduced in this proposal an option for citation and fine. Uh, this does not exist in the attorney discipline space. It does in other California professional licensing agency discipline. And so we did introduce uh, that here as well. I think we can go on.
Yeah. Okay, and then in regards to the licensing and oversight committee. We had quite a bit of discussion about having there be adequate number of people, not so many people that it becomes a committee that can't function. Um, and the recommendation was for thirteen members, of whom one would be a judge. The three, once we have them, would be paraprofessional licensees, two attorneys, six public members and one paraprofessional educator uh, who could come from either a community college setting or one of the uh, law schools. The appointing authority mirrors the Board of Trustees with it being the Supreme Court, Senate Assembly and Governor. Uh, did you want to say anything about this?
No.
Okay, alright, next slide. And then implementation, I think, um, this is another important point for us to make today, which is that the idea is to roll this out in a phased manner such that the only practice areas at the outset would be collateral criminal, which is really a very narrow scope of practice. As you know from our previous discussion, family, children in custody and housing. Um, and then Leah will tell us about how we selected the geographic areas because in fact, there was quite a bit of work that went into this, and I think, I think it's worth spending a couple of minutes on.
Okay, so we looked um, at a number of different data points in order to develop the recommendations about practice areas. So on the supply side, we looked at the number of individual So on the supply side, we looked at the number of individuals, we started with all fifty-eight counties in the state. Looking at the number of individuals by county who had taken the bar. I believe we looked at two or three attempts or more and had not passed the bar exam because that's a potential licensee pool. Uh, we also looked at um, paralegals who had graduated from ABA certified paralegal program. Uh, to the extent we were able to get that data from the ABA, so those were our two inputs on the supply side. On the demand side, we looked at the percentage of self-represented litigants. We also looked at our justice gap study data to help us take a look at need at need and supplies, client demand. And then we thought about coverage uh, and wanting to roll this out in a measured fashion. Uh, but in a way that would allow us to understand the impact of the program in our very different distinct geographic areas of California. So we picked Southern California, not Los Angeles, determining LA was simply too big uh, for an initial rollout. The central uh, California counties thinking about access and need uh, and the very tremendous population growth in that part of the state. And then, as you heard earlier, the northern part of the state, uh, centraling our northern uh, counties in Sacramento. Because the other, many of the others, we don't show it listed here, but we've got some far northern counties that are quite small. Um, so we aggregated them together with Sacramento to create a viable cluster.
Okay, and then um, evaluation metrics, of course, important when rolling anything out. And you know, the thought being, how does one try to figure out whether it's effective and how to improve it? And of course, this is part of the reason, harkening back to the requirement of reporting what was actually charged. Which is to me, a very significant difference with attorneys. Um, you know, we spent a lot of time, you don't have the time now to do, but we spent so much time getting input and information from other jurisdictions. Within the United States and even outside of, for example, we had a couple of folks from Canada speak with us about what they're doing up there in family and other areas. And so we really tried to learn from the fact that if California rolls forward um, with a program like this, it will not be the first state to do so. We're certainly not here to cast aspersions on any other program or why it didn't, didn't work. But we certainly tried to take into consideration what happened, how difficult is it to get into the program? How much of the need is there in the different areas? Because while certainly our main focus was on the fact of consumer protection and decreasing the justice gap. We also have to think about the fact that if this is not a viable living for people, then of course the program is not going to work. And Leah, do you want to add anything on this one?
Um, no, I just want to say we heard some public comment to the effect that there were no data reporting requirements and it's just incorrect. There's ongoing requirements to report fees, as you've heard on multiple occasions. And for the evaluation uh, period, which is the duration of the program rollout, which is recommended to be a three-year period. There's very extensive reporting requirements and data collection from paraprofessionals, clients and stakeholders, including lawyers and judges. But we, we've covered this.
Yeah, yeah, we've pretty much covered this. Um, okay. Yeah, and we've pretty much covered this as well.
And now we're ready to close out.
Go for it.
All right, so this is the roadmap as as currently contemplated. Uh, today you are receiving the report and recommendations asked to issue it for public comment. Assuming a sixty-day public comment period, the public comment would come in at the end of November. And we would convene the working group in December to review public comment and to determine if any modifications uh, to the recommendations were warranted or supported by the working group. That one then take us to the January board meeting where you would receive the final recommendations as modified by public comment. You'd obviously, of course, receive all of the public comment. If we can go forward, also in January, I'm sorry, go back, sorry, we. In January, after board approval, we would submit um, a request to the Supreme Court to authorize us to pursue the establishment of a paraprofessional program. Now we can go forward. We would wait to get that Supreme Court authorization and assuming that we get that in February or March, in time for the March board meeting. The board would then act to submit the program formally to the legislature. And that would include the set of statutory changes that would be needed in order to enact the program. And then the legislative process would begin a full vetting uh, by the, by the legislature, certainly by our judiciary committees. Uh, with the goal being to have the authorization to implement at least the initial program rollout included in the twenty twenty-three fee bill, I think we have one final slide. If it's included in the fee bill, we need to bring back uh, any changes that are needed to the recommendations based on what is actually codified in the fee bill. And so you can see that process here as well as the need to submit final program rules to the Supreme Court. So we understand that we're not sure what the legislature might ultimately uh, include in the fee bill. And there needs to be some time in the late fall and winter of twenty twenty-two to actually finalize the program. And if all of that happens, then we have one more slide, I think. That enables us to actually implement uh, in March of twenty twenty-three. So we're talking a good sixteen months away from implementation of even the pilot. Based or the phased implementation uh, based on the timeline that we have developed for today. And that's it, we can take down the PowerPoint and we're done talking up here.
Yeah, and I can um, I mean, I've obviously, I'm obviously late to my next minute. And it's still be it, uh, this is incredibly important and I certainly wasn't going to leave without having had the opportunity to go through our basic presentation, you know, regardless of who I annoy in the process. Um, so uh, I am certainly happy to hang around for a few more minutes. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm simply the messenger. But if there are any questions that you'd like to pose to me um, and or Leah or anyone else, I'm more than happy to try to respond as best I can.
Well, let me, let me lead off by just thanking you for your leadership on this group, uh, Justice Petru. And uh, to thank you and Leah and all the members and everyone who contributed to this. Uh, the level of detail that has gone into this is pretty amazing. And I was also amazed by the sheer number of meetings that were listed. So this has been a pretty gargantuan effort and just done with uh, so much care, so I, so I really.
And I, and I need to point out on that front, I mean, of course, we had a number of attorneys who were spending time that they could have been billing doing this instead. Um, but also, you know, we had at least one public member who chose to dedicate her time to this group when it meant not making any money that day and having to forego very much needed income. And I think it's important to recognize um, that kind of dedication and that kind of work. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's no, this is what I should be doing, I have a public service job. So when I add this on to the other things I'm doing, it's not a big deal. But I think that for people who are foregoing, um, certain people who are foregoing income in order to be able to do it and other opportunities. They're the ones uh, who really should be acknowledged in the process. I did think it was important to give you something, and and I know it's kind of horrifying to get a fourteen-hundred-page document, right? Like, who wants that? But I did think it was important to give you as much granular detail as you wanted. Because what good is it to come to you and say, here is a general parameters of what a program would look like? Well, of course, the obvious response to that is, okay, but what does that actually mean? Right, like someone's going to be licensed in family law, well, what does that mean? So hopefully with this proposal, albeit lengthy, it provides the opportunity for you to see what does it actually mean? Um, and I see Mr. Duran has got his hand up.
Thank you, Justice Petru, I I know you uh, don't have a lot of time, so I will just say huge thank you uh, on top of Sean's. But I do have two questions, and if I missed it in the written materials, I apologize. What is uh, trauma-informed training or, I almost said trauma-induced, but what, what, I don't understand what that means.
Sure. Uh, what's your second question?
And the second question is, did the committee uh, give any thought to uh, the nomenclature on the employment? I mean, income maintenance or in, in, in clement or income protection? Because I think that causes me some, some uh, confusion with like employment law, maybe it's.
No, and I, and I think you're right on that.
Job protection or job maintenance um, as opposed to employment, and then maybe too late for that, just.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't know that it's too late for anything, um, but I, I mean, I will say that I concur, taking your second point first. Um, I concur with you, I think that's a little confusing, I actually, I'm not a huge fan of the employment title at all. Because um, wage an hour, which is the narrow carve-out, is traditionally not thought of as being part of employment law. Like, people say they do employment law, that doesn't mean they're not the wage an hour people, right? So I do think there's some room in here for further clarification and to make the nomenclature um, less confusing. And I apologize that we didn't uh, fully take care of that on the first go-round. In regards to trauma-induced training, I'm going to ask Leah to chime in, but I'm just going to say that it really has to do, i- it's something that I wish that we all took. Um, which is when you're dealing with clients or people who are uh, appearing in front of you who have been in extraordinarily difficult situations, for example, victims of domestic violence or other people who have, are, you know, in, in trauma in their lives. You need some understanding about how that impacts people, how does that impact their ability to remember things? How does that impact their ability to tell their story, right? How does that impact how you, what kind of sensitivities do you need to have to someone who's experienced um, not having stable housing? Or um, being a victim of abuse? So in my mind, it really goes to being educated about how that impacts people. Including, because I'm telling you, it really impacts people's ability to recall and to express and to advocate for themselves. Um, so to understand how that impacts people and what does that mean for how you should interact with them as their representative? I- if you are in, you know, again, I'm, I'm lobbying for something that's not in front of us, but add it to the attorney training too, I think it would be very good. Um, Leah?
I just say that the impetus for that um, recommendation was really is that the judges on the working group. I believe that the judicial council is mandating our role, beginning, will begin to mandate this type of training for judges.
Correct.
And we did speak to someone at UCL, UCLA Law School, I think that is the only law school in California currently teaching this. Um, and it would really resonated with the working group in terms of making people able to be effective um, and appropriate representatives for their clients.
And if I can add to that, initially, we were looking at this um, with regard to representation in violence prevention cases. But as the group looked at it and talked to the person who's teaching this course, there was a recognition that um, almost all clients who have any kind of legal problems that they're dealing with have some sort of trauma. And it would be useful for all of the practitioners.
Thank you all three, I think it's important for us to remember that just in our practice as lawyers as well.
Alrighty, are there any other um, questions?
Sorry, take one more, I see.
Oh, sure.
Okay, go ahead Christine.
And I believe you're muted. I don't see, Christine, I can't hear you, am I?
I think you're on.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, the, the micro, microphone is uh, off. Uh, but good afternoon again, um, Justice Petru, I just want to address one of the issues um, that was raised in one of the dissents. Because I think it was um, heavily coded earlier during the public comment um, section. Um, and it's in regards to the Washington um, program that was canceled, a comparable program that was canceled after five years of implementation, um, because there were only thirty participants. And my question is, well, I'm not sure, and if I've missed it, um, please forgive, um, excuse me. But in terms of like funding and uh, generating interest from uh, people. Um, what are the safeguards in place uh, to ensure that this program is uh, going to fly? As opposed to, you know, uh, having uh, another scenario uh, like the Washington where basically after five years it folded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want me to answer that?
I do, I'm not, I, I, you know, I'm just going to say it right now, I'm not going to, I am not going to apply about um, you know, why a program in another jurisdiction potentially didn't go forward. I think there were some lessons learned, but I think it's better coming from Leah.
Yeah, and I think there's a debate uh, when you talk to different people from Washington about what actually happened. But what we're clear about is the original um, uh, educational requirements, I believe, were three thousand hours or experiential requirements, the educational and experiential requirements were considerably greater than where we eventually landed. And so what we heard is that in Washington, it took so long to get licensed and it was so expensive. And you had to do all of this experiential training throughout, without necessarily being compensated. And it just simply wasn't viable, then it was a fairly limited scope of practice, only family law and no in-court representation. So when you think about career viability or viability in general, you've got to think about all these different aspects of the equation. And I think the working group really did come to an appropriate balance in terms of pretty high educational requirements. If you think of the number of hours that those unit requirements translate to and experiential requirements. But we do have pathways for people to apply their previous education to those requirements. So if they took a family law course.
Right, because so long as it was recent.
Yeah, so that, they didn't have that in Washington. So I would say Christine, we looked in detail at some of the reasons, the stated reasons for the failure of the Washington program. And the licensing committee in particular modified and adjusted its recommendations to sort of point by point address those concerns while still protecting the public.
And then I think we have a couple more hands, Mr. Tony?
Thank you, uh, Justice Petru. Um, I'm uh, I'm ju, this is an informational question, an understanding, uh, comprehension question. I have zero understanding of why you, of, of why the committee would even consider paraprofessionals owning a portion of law firm. I, I, I have zero understanding of, of, of why. I understand they can, you know, they can own their own firms, but why? I, I just don't even get what the, you know, what it is.
Right, um, so, and, and again, I'm just going to, you know, none, none of this is necessarily my view, that's not my job. And, and I think it was very clear in my role um, on the, on the working group that my job was to facilitate discussion and to help people reach an endpoint, right? So that it wasn't three years later that the working group is still going and you don't have work product in front of you. My understanding, and Leah can correct me, is that the primary driver behind the desire to have um, ownership possibility is so that paraprofessionals or triple LPs or whatever we end up calling them and attorneys are actually working together in the same space and can therefore actually functionally work together and provide services at a lower cost. So for example, if someone comes in and has a legal problem that can likely be resolved pre-trial that is within an area of practice and the, and the paraprofessional can do that work at a much lower fee than the attorney. But then we get to a certain point and realize, no, actually, it's going to be moving forward to a trial phase. That it could then be turned over within the firm and not have duplication of cost or work or effort. Um, Leah, am I correct or am I off base?
You're correct, and I want to ask Randy to really tell us why this might be beneficial, but I'll just give you an example, Mark. Say you've got three paraprofessionals and a lawyer, you want to form a business together. And you would want to do that as a paraprofessional because your scope of practice is limited, you cannot take the case. Uh, you can't do every single thing within the family law context. So you got three paraprofessionals and a lawyer without five-point-four that change. Those paraprofessionals don't, wouldn't have any ability to have ownership in the firms, even though it's three to one, they couldn't have any ownership. So it really disincentivizes the kind of partnerships that we think really will actually increase access for the consumer. But Randy, could you briefly describe some of the benefits of five-point-four, the modification recommended by the group?
Sure, so let me just mention two aspects of this. One is that there's a concern that if you want to establish a, a sustainable, a viable, new licensed uh, business profession. That having ownership interest in the business itself is one way of uh, assuring that there's that incentive to put in not just your equity, but your sweat equity into making the business work. And so it's different when you're just an employee, in other words. And so the rules of professional conduct for attorneys prohibit uh, participation in an organization that engages in the practice of law where any non-lawyer has an ownership interest. And the approach taken in creating the paraprofessional rules of professional conduct were to adapt them. And so in this instance, the paraprofessional is not a complete non-lawyer. They are authorized to engage in the practice of law and they are regulated as a licensee. And so some of the risks and potential for harm that would come. And so some of the risks and potential for harm that would come from the participation of a lawyer with a non-lawyer in a co-owned firm is diminished by the fact that these are a joint of co-licensed professionals. The other point I want to make is that, that one of the discussion points was that there is a transactional cost for those, let's say they are, you know, even moderately income consumers of legal services